Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the January meeting of the Audit, Compliance and Risk Management Committee. First, as Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of the duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest. If you know any conflict of, any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Hearing none, I will ask Chris McClure to please call role.
Chair Patel.
Here.
Vice Chair Turner.
Here.
Mr. Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Heavens. Mr. Cottis. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Chairman, you have a corn.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the fiscal year 24 work plan. To hear from the Office of Internal Audit, please, Mr. Weber. You might need to turn your mic on, I think there's a button.
There we go, is that better? All right, thank you. I appreciate the time here before you all this morning. We just want to share with you an update of the Office of Internal Audit Fiscal Year 2024 Work Plan, where we stand, we're midway point of the work plan year, so it's always a good time to come together and, and talk about the activities that has occurred so far this year and what we have on the horizon ahead of us for the second part of the year. Each year, the Board of Governors approves the work plan, or the Board of Trustees, I should say, apologize for that, approves the internal audit work plan as a roadmap for our projects, outlining what we need to do, and those projects come about through a risk-based audit approach where we evaluate many facets of the university's operations to determine where our resources can best be focused on through the course of the year. This chart shows the percentage composition of the work plan that encompasses both planned engagements at 86%, that's the majority of our projects, and special projects and carryover engagements that each represents 7% of our work plan. The 27 planned engagements, our projects, as I mentioned, identified through the risk assessment process. Special projects are those that arise during the course of the year, those can be requested from leadership and encompass consultations, investigations, or just general assistance with internal controls. Carryover projects are those projects that were ongoing in June 30th, but just were not completed as of July 1. This graphic summarizes the achievements of the office as we conclude the first half of the year. The first column on that chart before you details the total number of engagements populating each category of audit activity. As it shows, there are 35 engagements of focus that we were, have worked on so far this year. At this milestone, we've concluded six planned audits, six are underway, and additionally, all proposed carryover engagements, special projects and advisory projects are also included. So in total, that's 14 concluded, placing us at 57% overall of our, our work plan at the halfway point. Based on this, I believe that we are in fact in a good position to accomplish the majority of our work plan engagements through the course of the year. Shown here is a summary of the 10 completed engagements, along with the date of the final report being issued for each of those. Additionally, the six projects underway are also detailed here that show the, this again is at 12:31, the status of where those reports were in the, in the audit cycle process. Similarly, this slide shows the advisory projects that we worked on this year, as well as the special projects. The two advisory projects, the Gene Manay Agreed Upon Procedures Review was a project that was requested by the Office of Sponsored Research, where we provided agreed upon procedures on a completed engagement. Our office doing this work actually saved the department about $30,000 in having to outsource the engagement. The UNC Innovation University of Florida Audit, that's assistance, assistance our office provided to the Office of Innovation in support of an external audit that that division is going through. So we helped to prepare information and work papers to supply to the audit, audit staff representing the University of Florida. Special project engagements, there are two listed there, one was Facebook Marketplace sales, that was an investigative review that we completed, it turned out to be unsubstantiated. It was an assessment of an allegation of an individual selling university equipment through Facebook Marketplace, but it turned out not to be a legitimate concern. And the second is a quality assurance review that our department went through, and we'll talk a little bit about that in more detail later on. A component of internal audit activity also encompasses follow-up to ensure that corrective actions that are reported to you through the completed audit reports have been implemented. So we have a tracking system where we follow and log all audit recommendations and follow up on those throughout the course of the year. At the midway point, our audit had generated 19 new recommendations adding to that list, while we verified and closed out 22 as being resolved. Total recommendations yet to be verified are 32. And of those 32, really 26 are, are in the phase that they're not yet ready to be reviewed based on the proposed action date supplied to leadership and the management response. Six of those are, are past due, and we're currently working on resolving those and anticipate those should be closed in the third quarter. This slide kind of represents a high-level overlook of the 24 work plan at this juncture where we're ahead of the prior year's engagement completion rate of 52 versus 44% last year at this time. Additionally, I think in support of that really is a decrease also in the number of special project and advisory projects, where this year we've had four, the prior year at this time we had 14. Also, the department has experienced some staffing struggles this year, both in the first and second quarter, where we lost staff and had to reengage the hiring process to bring two new members back onboard as, as backfill. During the second half of the, the work plan year, we'll focus our attention on completing as many of the remaining projects as we can, I think we're in a good position to do that. The engagements will then be evaluated for carryover, any that aren't completed at year end, and put back into the risk assessment process to be determined if they should carry forward to the next year. So at this time, we propose no changes to the existing work plan as it stands. Regarding staff member professional development, according to the standards and within our charter, I have to report on this each year to you. So aligning with the standards, we budget 40 hours of professional training for each audit member annually. That's reporting to those external crediting boards on the 31st, by the 31st of December. All members have completed training, very happy with that. Also, I advocate really for the department through professional development. And this year, UNC's internal audit team presented two presentations at the Association of College and University Auditors Conference in September. Additionally, two staff members serve in different ACUAA community committee roles. And our department also presented at the UNC System Internal Audit Events during the year. These activities really aid in building staff development and bring an awareness to the internal audit efforts here at UNC. Lastly, the committee charter requires that this committee to be updated on the outcomes of the annual comprehensive financial report, and just alerting you here that that will be preside, provided by Vice Chancellor Neufman as part of the, the Budget and Finance Meeting. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions related to our plan.
Any questions?
I'm curious, on the fiscal year 2024 activity, the recommendations, are those typically process-driven recommendations, or are they recommendations that require budget? I'm particularly interested in unbudgeted expense that goes against recommendations, just what the scope might be that we're talking about when we, when we get into that.
Good question, and the majority of them are process-related, especially in compliance audits, for example, where we're looking for compliance with rules, regulations, external governance. Sometimes we provide recommendations back, sometimes there's efficiency recommendations where we're looking at a process and we're perhaps see maybe a better or more effective or efficient way to do it, and we provide recommendations and feedback on that as well. With regard to your specific questions, some, some recommendations can be improved by employing additional resources in some cases, not always the case, but in some cases. If it requires a recommendation to maybe enhance a system or obtain a system to help support an automated system to support a process, that frequently carries costs with it.
Okay. Mr. Bullock. Dean, thanks, good morning. Wanted to ask you about staffing struggles, we, we had talked about that probably maybe this time last year about your, your staff and the robustness or non-rebustance of your particular staff. Wanted to know if there's any recommendations you have for, for this board and the administration on what we can do to assist with that, I mean, particularly as we've got the budget coming up to, to trustee Turner's point, we, we do have budget for the next fiscal year that we'll begin working on here.
Right.
As we speak, and just wondering what we might can do to help you with that.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate last year when we, the committee did advance budgeted funds, additional budgeted funds for the department. This year, we are fully staffed with eight FTE as of now. Our true struggles come from the environment in which we operate in, in the community that we operate in. It's very competitive, we had an individual who we hired first in the first quarter, and was a very good, talented individual, he lasted with us three weeks because he actually had interviewed for another job prior to, to accepting our job with us. Their offer came a little later after he already started here, and we couldn't match the salary that he was getting at the other position, so facilitated leaving. So that's really, you know, the biggest struggle is the salary scale for the auditors overall, but within the, within the environment here in the triangle.
So if we can assist in any way with that salary scale, that is, would be helpful, is maybe the best way for me to put it.
Well, I think some of this is governed by the state as well, we're not alone in the struggle. Many of our, the, the other UNC system universities face this as well, as well as state government. We have hiring bans and salary ranges that we pay in based on experience, and so we hire and, and fill positions within those bands, and so some of that is kind of outside of the reach of even, you know, additional dollars based on those bands that are set by the state.
I'll just note that all SHRA employees are underwritten right now. SHRA according to the state, they are, and PHRA agents are to be backed up by the spring. So there is some work being done, not just in the auditor space, but across campus.
Okay. Thank you, Becky.
Yep.
That's good advice.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh. Hi.
Hey.
Thank you for your information. About the recommendations, is there a document or a report that is kept on kind of the management action plan and the completion? And I know you said, I guess there are six that are overdue, is that something that we could have access to?
Certainly, there, we keep a log of as we issue reports, it's an automated log where we issue all our reports, our findings, and we track them, and the status of our own follow-up communications with those. These six that are outstanding relate to one engagement, it was a special project request of our office, and just due to some staffing and turnover and, and other events within that division, it's just kind of delayed the, the, being able to actually close them out. But like I said, we anticipate doing that in the third quarter, but I could certainly share a report with you with what those are. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think that's all that we had there. Our next agenda item is to hear the results of the internal audit external quality assurance review. Mr. Weber, again.
All right, this, the second item here is a discussion of the recently completed external quality assurance review as, as the chair referenced. Audit operations follow guidelines established by the Institute of Internal Auditors, which set goals and standards that internal auditing must follow. Those are also prescribed in the State Audit Act, so our shop and all other state audit shops are required to follow these standards. The standards mandate that audit functions must be independently evaluated once every five years. The prior review was completed in December of 2018, just a few short months before my arrival to Carolina. The recent assessment evaluated the department's conformity to the prescribed standards and the code of ethics. The assessment team visited the university, the external assessment team were here, was here for four days in December, where they reviewed department processes, our risk assessment process, charters, both the audit committee charter and our own departmental charter, our work plans, as well as conducted meetings and interviews with departmental staff, senior leadership, and some select members of this committee as well. The International Professional Practice Framework encompasses defined mandatory elements. They are the attribute standards that address characteristics of organizations and individuals performing internal audits, and that encompasses 19 specific requirements. The performance standards define the nature of completing internal auditing and provide criteria against which auditing efforts are evaluated. And in this situation, there are 13 individual requirements. Grading of, of the completed quality assurance review comes in just three categories. It generally conforms, which is the highest rating you can receive. Partially conforms means that you're, you're doing a pretty good job, but there's some level for improvement, and does not conform really, just indicates that there was a failure to meet the requirement. The performance standards, based on the completed results, show that our office generally conforms, that's the highest rating with the code of ethics and all defined standards for the assessment period. So we're very happy with that outcome. The review also covered a few points of, of, I guess, best practices that they highlighted. One is that they indicated that we were represented as a trusted advisor here on campus. Secondly, that our organizational independence was strong, we report to this committee and to the chancellor, and they had evidence of strong interactions of both groups in our work. And the use of automated tools in, in deployment of our audits, we use IDEA, it's for data analytics, and we also use Nexus, which is an automated software tool for doing IT-related audits. The review also highlighted two opportunities for improvement, which we greatly appreciated that feedback. One was to continue our, our automation efforts with increasing the numbers, the license agreements for IDEA and Nexus. We currently have one license agreement for each of those softwares, and they said increasing that would afford cross-training on the applications. And secondly, to enhance some of our standard operating procedures, specifically around more detailed steps for an auditor to follow for completing consulting engagements, for processes communicating conflicts of interest if there are any, and for dealing with identified omissions or errors in any reports that had been issued. In highlighting a kind of the comparison, I, I think that we are very fortunate that there was significant improvement from the 2018 audit, where two attribute standards were rated as partially conforms, six performance standards were rated as partially conforms, and one is, does not conform. There were three institutional improvement opportunities, that's directed towards leadership, and this time there were none, and there were seven internal audit opportunities to strengthen operations. So overall, I think, you know, I, this is really the result of my team, of the professionals, the support of the chancellor and this committee to internal audit. It really was able to strengthen our department and our operations over these last four and a half years. So I'm very appreciative of that. Happy to answer any questions related to the QAR, if there are any.
Thank you very much, I just, before I open it up for questions, I just want to say the post-review call that we had with the, the folks that conducted the review, the comments heard back were phenomenal, just the rave reviews for, for Dean and, and our audit team was, was very nice to hear, and you can see it in the results, based on the 18 review to what the, the review, this past review showed. So thank you very much for that. As far as I remember them talking about the, the added licenses, I mean, I would say if that's something that you think it's prudent, I know we discussed that a little bit, we'd definitely look at putting it into the budgetary process as we go into next year. If it's going to help our process and, and make it more efficient, more streamlined, then I think we should, instead of having the one license for each, and everybody's kind of cross-pollinating, cross-sharing and, and passwords and things, so something to take a look at.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep. Open it up for questions. Nope. Okay. Our next agenda item is to hear an update from Vice Chancellor Battle regarding the campus security matters. Mr. Battle will give an initial presentation to this committee in open session, and is prepared to answer specific questions you may have in closed session following his presentation. Mr. Battle.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, trustees, chancellor, for the opportunity to come before you today. From time to time, over the past two years, I've presented to you periodic camp updates about various aspects of our campus safety, and so I come before you today in that same vein. I'm going to focus today on three areas of campus safety, three of our units. Emergency management and planning, environment, health and safety, and campus police today. But before I get started, I'd like to, and this is our organization chart for all of campus safety, so you can see we're highlighting three of our, of our six areas today. But before I get started, I do want to recognize the leaders of our campus safety group, because I think most of you probably know them, but just want to highlight very quickly them and their background. And so our, first I want to start with Derek Kemp, and if you would stand. Derek Kemp is our Associate Vice Chancellor for Campus Safety and Risk Management. And Derek has been here now for eight years, going on nine, and just by way of background, because I don't know how many of you know this, Derek was a, almost a 30-year Navy veteran. He actually held command of the San Diego Naval Base, which is the second-largest naval base in the world. So just wanted to highlight that about Derek. Next, Kathy Brennan. Kathy is Executive Director for Environmental Health and Safety, a chemist by training. Kathy has 15 years of experience in EHS at UNC, including the last four years as Executive Director. And the last four years have been especially challenging, but she has done yeoman's work there, leading efforts with COVID, our lead testing that a lot of you are familiar with. So highlight Kathy there. Daryl Jeter is next, and Daryl Jeter is Executive Director for our Emergency Management and Planning Group. Daryl has, is a former Marine, right? Or always Marine, always Marine. Has 20 years of experience in the emergency management space, most of which has been with UNC System Schools, and has been in his current position here, leading our emergency management efforts for the past six years. And then finally, Chief James, I won't say too much about Chief, because I, I think all of you know Chief, but almost 30-year veteran of the Greensboro Police Department, including the last two as chief. Very lucky to have him here, and in July, he'll celebrate two years with us. So I just, I do that, one, so, so that you can put faces with names, but also, I, I am constantly amazed every day with the quality and caliber and credentials of the folks that I work with, and, and so I just wanted to highlight that. Okay, we'll start with emergency management and planning, and I'm just going to hit kind of the high-level things that are, that are either, we, we think you'll be of interest, or, or things that we've talked about in the space before. So we're currently in the process of doing an after-action review in reference to the August 28 shooting. So that review formally launched in December, excuse me, December 15th. We have an outside contractor that is leading our efforts to compile an after-action report. And that corporation is the Center for Naval Analysis, CNA. We've done some things certainly in the lead-up to their work to kind of prepare us for this, and that after-action report is going to look at the totality of the response to the shooting. So tactics, support, communication, the whole thing, infrastructure, everything. And it's going to tell us, you know, what we did right, and what areas, what opportunities we have for improvement as well. And so these are the phases of the, of the after-action review. The current phase that we're in is the actual process, which is the data collection, the interviews, small groups, I think my interview is actually, I kick it off on Monday with our folks from CNA. And that's going to be the longest part, understandably, of the review. And it'll be followed by a generation of a report, and then a closeout, where we will present findings, certainly to university leadership, and we'll also present findings to the public as well as appropriate. We anticipate completion of the after-action review later this spring. So it's a relatively quick process, but it's going to be thorough, and we will get some good information out there that will help us improve our overall security program. Other projects in emergency management and planning, not to minimize these as well, after-action review certainly is taking priority, but we've continued work on our emergency operations plan, and that was released in July of 2023. We've already trained over 50 campus emergency management officials last June and July, and we're going to continue that training for emergency policy officials coming up soon. In the area of accessibility, I won't read from you from, from the slide, but we've had an active presence there. And then in 20, in October of this year, in partnership as a highlight with Facility Services, launched a new elevator outage notification feature in the Carolina Ready Mobile Safety App. If you'll allow me to take just a quick detour here, do all of you have the Carolina Ready Mobile Safety App? Okay. If not, you can go to the Apple Store or Google Android Store, input Carolina Ready, and you will pull down that app, and that has all kinds of information about our program. So you'll get alerts, you can get alerts directly to your phone, all kinds of information about various aspects of safety, connections with campus. It's a really, really very useful app, and so we're pushing, we've had it in place for a couple of years now, and so we're pushing definitely for everyone to adapt that app, and it's open to the public, so not just members of the UNC community, so parents, community members, whatnot, can know what's going on safety-wise at Carolina. Okay. Environment, health and safety. So want to wrap up, or kind of tell you what we've done in the aftermath of our lead testing program. So we got a few things here that are important, but will help us probably be on solid footing for the future as we test for lead and other, other, other water quality testing measures. So we've developed a program that, and I think we talked about that a little the last time I talked to you about lead, that we were going to develop a program of periodic testing, and so that has been done. We've also purchased some advanced water testing equipment to aid in testing. And then as part of our budget request this year, we've requested a new professional position so that they can oversee the position. So before, when we did testing, we certainly had yeoman's work from EHS, we had work from students that helped us in the process, as well as a contractor. But we're now moving to the next phase, where we'll have a professional to oversee that program to make sure that we test for quality of, of water on our campus. And then, and then another initiative, Automated External Defibrillator Program, we're really ramping up our supply and, of AEDs on campus. Again, I won't read to you everything that's on the slide, but we submitted a request for one-time funding for over 300 AEDs, equipment and supplies, so that we could put them, and in some cases, multiple kits in campus buildings to increase accessibility on campus. We already have some AEDs on campus, but this will really help us to ramp up that presence. And I think Auditor as well, because they helped us identify some program improvements early in the fall, and we've been able to move very quickly on that. Just as a highlight, the kits that we're putting in, Ms. Brennan and did a presentation for ABC Kemp and I back in December, I believe, and, and showed us the kits. And not only can we track when they're used, but when they're opened, they have a step-by-step guide so that anybody can just open those up and know how to use them right away by just following some simple steps. So we think this will be a major step forward in, in improving campus safety. Okay. And last, but certainly not least, UNC Police. So again, these are some of the activities that we've undertaken both before and mostly after the August 28 shooting, in terms of increasing our ability to respond, educating campus, strengthening, strengthening our relationships with our partners in law enforcement, so that, heaven forbid, if we have another situation, we are even more prepared than we were last time. And I will say, last time certainly, our law enforcement officers did yeoman's work, and our whole emergency management operation did yeoman's work in terms of their response. And so they, they're not content to just sit on that, and so this is some of the, these are, these are outlining some of the things that we're doing to continue to improve and to continue to increase our capacity. Okay. Ongoing review and improvement effort. Okay, ongoing review and improvement efforts. So again, I won't read everything here to you, but I will highlight a few things. So we are currently, you know, working in partnership with Facilities and Operations and other groups to, to make various infrastructure improvements on campus. One thing that has attracted particular interest are our license plate readers, and I'm pleased to say, pleased to say that our recommendation on that will be finished this week. So we went through the bid process. Our procurement group did yeoman's work in getting that out and completed quickly. And so we will submit our, our, our selection this week, and we ought to be able to move in that space very quickly. Okay, and so now I will stand for questions. And what I would like to do with your questions, I'd like for you, not just me to answer questions, but you to hear from members of our team in their particular areas of expertise as well. Because like I said, we have an excellent, excellent team, and I would like for you to get to know them very well, and I'd like for them to have an opportunity to address you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chancellor Battle, thank you very much for this. I do have a question that sort of relates to maybe even some next steps, which is mandatory training for faculty and staff with respect to active shooter events? And, and, and that training being something more than passive? Because it's my understanding that what we have now is, we have the information available, but there is really a requirement, and I have publicly said this, that it's akin to the instructions on a, on an appliance. You know, you get the appliance, that how you buy a new appliance or a microwave, and you get the instructions and you look at it when you need to, but it's not something that you necessarily look at from the very beginning. So I'm, I guess I, I would liken it to, and it certainly is unfortunate. And, and I don't think anybody here likes the, the idea of this, but, but I look at it almost in today's world akin to the old swim test, where, you know, you couldn't graduate from here, at least I couldn't graduate from Carolina unless I passed the swim test, right? And so it's almost like, you know, in, instead of a graduation requirement, kind of, I hate to use the word requirement, but sort of an initiation or a orientation effort where faculty, staff undergo some proactive, sort of in-your-face type of programmatic training and information. So, so God forbid, as you said, if, if something like that happens again, there is that element of, you know, some context for, particularly for our students and, and for faculty and for adjunct professors. Because we, we have adjunct professors that may not spend their full time here on campus, but may unfortunately be on-site if something happens. I wonder if you could speak to that, and, and if you have any plans for that, or if you develop sort of a strategy for that moving forward. Thanks.
Well, I think, one, a lot of good work is, is taking place in our Emergency Management Group into looking at what various places do in terms of training, mandatory or not. One of the things our after-action report is gonna focus on, one of their heavy areas of focus is going to be in what type of proactive training to this line we should offer. One of the things that we found is that in several places that unfortunately have had a shooting incident, they have had a immediate reaction to go to mandatory training, only to have it, have to roll it back, because it did not, the structure of it, the stance of it was not as effective as it could be. And so we want to certainly avoid that, and we're gonna work with our, with CNA, our group that's doing the after-action report, as well as the information that Emergency Management has compiled and our colleagues, to just try to make sure that we have a program that not only will just be in name, but will be effective and something that is of use. One thing I can say, and you will see another pitch for Carolina Ready App, as you download the Carolina Ready App, we, the good news is, we have a, a number of tools, and a very user-friendly tools in terms of training, not only for active shooter, but for other emergency events that are already there. So in terms of what shape our training program takes in the next several months, we won't have to start from scratch in terms of building, building that. But your point is very much well-taken, and that's gonna be a central part of our review.
I am in favor of some type of mandatory, for what it's worth to the board. And Mr. Chancellor, I personally am in favor of it. I, I, and I do, and I have commend you and the team on the work that they did in August. I mean, it was exemplary, and, and, and so obviously keep that good work up, but.
Absolutely. And one thing I'll point out too, I didn't highlight, but it's listed on one of the slides as well, is since August, we have done between, I think UNC Police has done 54 trainings, is that right, Chief? 54 trainings of faculty and staff on active shooter. And that, that is a continuing effort as well, in addition to what we're talking about with a, a program of, of training coming forward. I can't, I'm sorry.
Sorry, what was the participation on those trainings? Were they well-attended or?
Chief?
They were well-attended. I can't give you specific numbers, but every time we were requested, there was a large group. And in addition to that, myself, Mr. Kemp, Mr. Jeter, we've also gone to a number of faculty meetings just to have general conversation about safety as well as active shooter.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Chair Patel, and Vice Chancellor Battle. Thank you again for your efforts and those of your team in, in keeping the campus safe. Two, two quick questions for you, maybe quick-ish questions. Probably putting the cart a little bit before the horse, but at the time, I remember there was concern about not being able to secure classrooms. Not all the classrooms had the QR code that showed how to secure that room. And I'm, I'm guessing that will be part of the after-action items. So that would be one of the items in terms of being able to secure those rooms. The second is, has to do with the, some of the protests that we had on campus this past fall. And I was wondering kind of what our plan is going forward if there's another attempted takeover of the South Building by campus protesters. Thank you.
Okay, so speaking to, and, and the vast majority of our protests this fall, I want to be on record as saying we're peaceful protest, and so that, that was not an issue. I think in terms of the different shapes that protest may take, from a safety perspective, we're certainly, you know, prepared to enforce law. I think we have with, with past protests, we've tried to maintain a strong presence, but not so much as to inflame the situation, so to speak. But I think we're well-prepared to handle what's come up. We've talked, Mr. Kemp and I, he can say we darkened each other's doors for hours this fall, talking about trying to anticipate things that are coming up and plans. But I think certainly from a safety perspective, we're well-positioned to make sure that this, one, certainly to, to protect our students' expression of speech, but also to make sure that the operations of the university go on.
I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm a, a free speech absolutist. And I absolutely want the university to remain a forum for all voices to be heard on any number of different issues. There's been a lot of concern raised about some of these protests that they verge on, that they have verged on harassment for some of our students. That there was a a promotion of violating university policy, as well as North Carolina state law with regards to encouraging face coverings and whatnot during some of these protests, as well as disrupting the, you know, the business of the university in terms of taking over the South Building. And I, I think that, you know, we need to let the campus community know that they and their guests on campus are welcome here, but they need to follow the law, and they need to follow university policy while they're, while they're here expressing their opinions.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Jones, maybe I'll just respond to that briefly too. So obviously an important topic. The what, what I've tried to say, and, and what I think is consistent with what's been said before, is that the, in the context of a very strong commitment to the First Amendment, which is not only what's required of us by law, but what should be our posture as a, as a place of learning, there are rules, and the, 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 the boundaries are wide, but they, they exist. And you're not allowed to threaten or intimidate your, your classmates or anybody else. You're not allowed to materially disrupt campus operations. You're not allowed to shout down a speaker. And we're going to enforce those, those rules. With respect to the, the, the face coverings, Chief James and his team have discretion, enforcement discretion, as you would hope they would, would have, to respond appropriately. And with respect to the, the occupation of South Building, I think a lot of lessons were learned as a result of, of that incident. I've, I've spoken with the team about that more than once, and I, I, I think we're prepared for for any kind of incident like that in the future.
Mr. Turner? Quick question on the after-action review. Would that include, you mentioned Carolina Ready. Will that include that platform and alert messaging? I was 2,300 miles away, and I remember some of the alerts. I wasn't quite sure, like, the content of the message and what it meant, et cetera, and I heard that anecdotally. Yes, we have tools, but how those tools are being used, will that be part of?
Absolutely, and we've already actually begun, based on some feedback that we received through the portal, the campus portal that we, that, that we placed earlier in the fall about our messaging and sharpening then, improving and whatnot. But that, that absolutely will be a part of the after-action review. Mr. Kodos?
I'm, I'm, it's a battle. Thank you for the update, and I'm encouraged by the licensed tag reader. I'll check with you next week.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But, you know, one of the reasons, one of the reasons we've been discussing a lot of this is not because of any of staff's action or the current administration, but the 2020 review by Auditor Weber that pointed out that $2.5 million was redirected and not spent on cameras or security systems. And when we do the after-action on the one shooter issuing call to labs, there not being any cameras. That's why we're harping on it now. So it's not, it's more of a criticism of the Chancellor Foltz's actions, frankly, on this, and wanting to make sure that we correct those mistakes. So we, you know, we do want to make sure that we have proper cameras and security systems, that we have vehicles to respond, that we have, you know, cars to actually get our officers out, which has been a problem. And these shouldn't be things that are slow-played. This should be, we need to do whatever we need to do to catch up. And we are playing catch-up on cameras and vehicles and an awful lot of things that were overlooked or defunded by prior administrations. And so that's why it keeps coming up, and we want to stress the urgency of it. Because I think if we have one goal here, it's to make sure that all the students are safe. As I would hope that my son who's up at George Washington, I would hope that they, the trustees there would ensure his safety. We've also talked about a live response center and the potential for, for developing that. We've talked about behavioral threat assessment teams. And, you know, I think something to explore is our relationships with with certain students that are coming in that potentially pose a threat or foreign nationals in the case of the Caudillab shooting. Dave had mentioned this, the empowering faculty to respond, but also empowering students to respond, especially for things like medical training, you know, how to respond with the, anything from the atrial fibrillation units to Narcan, to tourniquets, to IFACS chest seal devices. And I think also, you know, we, we've heard this before when we've talked about ROTC, the need for an enhanced presence for ROTC and law enforcement on campus, and that that should be part of our strategic planning. But can you give us a, an update on any of those items? I know it's a long list, but any that stand out?
So, so the great news is, nothing that you mentioned there is, is something that we're not working on at some point. So the after-action report will encompass a lot of the, the physical safety aspects that you talked about. But in advance of that, I know Derek Kemp has been working with Carly Perrin on looking at, okay, what's the lay of the land with cameras? Because we have a lot of cameras on campus, but unfortunately, some of them may be obsolete, some of them may not work. So looking at that aspect, but also looking at what we have to do, so that when we get that action, at that after-action report, we'll be ready to move and move intelligently. So we're not just waiting for that report to be done to, to look at that. I'll let Chief talk a little bit about the cars. Oh, threat assess, yes, Angel Gray came on board in October, former General Counsel for North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. She is now our coordinator. For threat assessment, is that the right title? Coordinator for threat assessment, and she has been wonderful. So we're doing a lot of that pro, and, and the university has done it previously, but Angel is certainly ramping up our efforts to be able to do a lot of that behavioral assessment, threat assessment, and that, that type of thing. Chief, if you want to say something about the cars?
Sure.
Hey, good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me to speak. As far as the cars, it has been a long process. The, the money for the cars, the funding has been allotted. We did receive 12 Dodge Durangos a few months ago. We're currently waiting to get those cars outfitted. We've, we switched from Ford to Durango simply because of a supply chain issue with the Ford Motor Company. The, the strike didn't help us. However, we are slated to get 15 Ford Explorers in within the next month. So once we get those cars in and we get them outfitted, we will be the only university in the UNC system that has take-home cars for their officers, which also is a great recruiting tool for us as we still work and try to fill out all of our vacancies. So that has been somewhat of a struggle, but that will certainly help in addition to the pay adjustments, which took effect last summer.
And the importance of the take-home cars is also, I guess there's twofold for that. One is it deters crime in those neighborhoods, which helps the surrounding area, but then allows them to get immediately to the scene if there's an issue on campus, like the campus shooting, and not have to come in and then hop in a golf cart or something to get to the, the scene.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct. Even on a daily basis, we, I look at it this way, we are paying people approximately 30 minutes of their shift to load and unload their vehicles each day. In the instant, instance where we had the, the shooting on campus, not only did officers come in, but they had to find a car first to respond to where we needed them to. If we had had the take-homes, then they could drive directly to the scene or to the post where we needed them to be.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Yeah, two questions. The first being, will the action, the after-action review include an audit of the classroom buildings, ones that didn't lock, perchance?
I'm sorry.
Will the after-action review include an audit of classroom buildings and the ability to lock? I know there were a few that did not lock during the time.
So the, the after-action report is gonna be comprehensive. So we're gonna cover, you know, everything, infrastructure, training, all of that kind of stuff. Mr. Jeter, I don't know if you want to come up and, and, okay, if I'm covering it correctly. So it's gonna cover the whole universe, almost anything you can think of relating to safety. It's, it's, and related to safety and related, excuse me, to active shooter event, we're, we're going to cover that.
And then follow-up as well. What is the level of student participation in that review? I know most of us were kind of boots-on-the-ground there at the time, so I'm just curious, will it be primarily students? Or what's the, the distribution between faculty, staff, and students involved?
Okay, and I'll call Mr. Jeter to come and talk about some of the focus group and some of the participation in that as well. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. With regard to your question, the current process that we're in, including the interviews, we have five core stake-
We have five core stakeholder groups uh that are participating in that interview uh interview process. One of the stakeholder groups. Includes representation from student faculty and staff. While we're not publicly disclosing the names of those that are participating, just to protect the process and the integrity and confidentiality of that process. As well as to give them an opportunity to fully disclose and share uh with the. Uh vendor, uh their take on it, uh student representation both from undergrad and grad. Is a part of that group that is already scheduled and we worked, but we worked through student government uh to uh get that selection.
Ms. Sevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Battle. Two questions. On the AEDs, do you know approximately how many we have before you add the three hundred?
Let me ask.
One twenty. And are they indoors and outdoors?
They're all indoors. We do have, so like police carries them in their vehicles and EHS carries them in their vehicles, but the rest on campus are inside.
I would encourage us, as we think about athletic fields, anywhere where our student athletes are competing or where our students are engaged in. Physical exertion that we know in a COVID world that myocarditis. For young people in the age group of our undergraduate students is a real problem. And we've seen across the country um tragic news about otherwise healthy young people who. Um are struck are stricken by this quickly and they could die with with sudden cardiac arrest and so. The AEDs being close by is the single best way to save them and it has to be soon. So if we could think about that in the context of where the centers are of the most physical exertion, that would be great.
Yeah, I did forget to mention that the trainers for the athletics teams do have them.
Great, great. And then one other thing, um as it relates to the shooting and the brandishing, both events. We are fortunate that none of our students were subjected to physical threats during that time, although they didn't know that, but what we do know. Is the mental anguish that they endured in both events by not knowing sooner. Um that the level of threat had been mitigated and understanding that. We have to have confidentiality and the police need privacy and time to resolve the threat. Uh I hope that our study will include our greatest effort to differentiate threat level. And to give our young students assurance that the threat has at least been lowered. Um because it was my my son who's a freshman, my son who's a senior. It was the extended amount of time that they truly believed their lives were in danger. In addition to the misinformation that was being shared via Twitter and text threads. I know, Chris, you saw that. Um if we could, if we could provide some, whatever level of information is is allowed. Um if we could provide some assurance sooner that the level of threat has been uh at least again mitigated.
No, and and point well taken and I and I will say that that's always certainly a focus to try to keep the campus community informed. Uh but but what I can say is that that when events like these happen, certainly, and and you know, Ms. Evans. Uh it's. Things are moving so quickly and I remember being in contact with the with the Chancellor's office and probably throughout every four things I was saying proved not to be true. And so we want to certainly balance making sure that we get information out as quickly as possible because we we don't want to add to the distress as much as we can. And balancing that with making sure we have accurate information so that we don't inadvertently um make the situation worse or put. Put students or or community members in harm's way. So your point is very, very well taken. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Lake?
Thank you, Chair Patel. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Battle. Um on the AEDs, um thank you for that information. Is is there like a guide or a template of what our peers or other schools um use as far as a mail and location and? Or I see that you guys are creating a master plan guidance document, but is that? Is there any guidance there?
I I'll I'll turn to to Kathy on that, but I know that our. One of the main guiding principles for us is is kind of to Ms. Evans' point is to make them as accessible as possible. Because when an event happens, that would require the use of the AED. We know that time is certainly of the essence. And there have been many stories and unfortunately, I was part of a a school district when I worked for uh General Counsel for Charlotte Michaelburg Schools. Where we had a student to uh die because there was there was an AED present but not proximate. So I know that that's been a a guiding principle, but I'll turn to Kathy to to talk about benchmarking if we've done.
Sure, so we did base our um master plan on other schools' AEDs programs. And our program has not been centralized historically and a lot of schools have gone to more of a centralized, so that's what we're looking to do. So the EHS is able to inventory the AEDs, make sure all the supplies are up to date. Pick preferred AEDs, training, all those things. Um previously, it was really by the department and so that's kind of what our new master plan is pushing. Why we made this budget request, so we can centralize it and really distribute it and think about where we're.
Hey, thank you. Um. That is a issue that's close to my heart. Um and then I have one more question on the um, thank you for the. Information on the improvement efforts and the review. I am very much interested in um. Enhancing our relationship with the town of Chapel Hill. Um. Is there, what's that plan like? I'm I'm guessing you've met the new mayor and. Kind of what's the plan going forward as we think about Franklin Street and campus safety?
So I I can tell you from certainly from the safety perspective, so our our relationship with the Town of Chapel Hill Law Enforcement. I I think is, I mean, it it was good when I got here, but I think it's the best that it's been. Um and I'll turn Mr. Kemp if he wants to add to that. Yes.
Chief, the fire, uh same people that we. Partner with at the football game, et cetera, et cetera, Halloween, et cetera, et cetera, we're joined.
Yep. And and I have a monthly meeting uh with the manager. In fact, uh we have our our lunch is coming up uh day after tomorrow. Uh for January uh to keep in contact in addition to if we need anything off cycle. We've also had a a small group that has met uh periodically, generally, at at least quarterly, I think we're overdue for a meeting now since COVID. Uh where we've talked about campus safety issues, student affairs has been very prominent in that group as well. Um and the former mayor was was part of that group. I don't know if the current mayor will continue, but we've had the town manager, city staff and that kind of thing. So I would say certainly from a safety perspective, our relationship is excellent. We do uh join activities together. They're here, you know, certainly when we need them and not just Town of Chapel Hill, but Orange County Sheriff uh as well. Uh their department has been really um really good, Carboro. Um so I don't want to leave anybody out, but we have, I think we have excellent relationships and I think they're just getting better. We're in constant communication with our with our teams.
I I think the concern uh, Chancellor Battle, is uh Franklin Street and the the safety and and of students that are there all the time. We have this discussion on an ongoing basis, previous meetings, you need to make sure that it's not just campus uh safety. It's it's beyond campus because our students are not always on campus. Yes, we need to make sure that that's kind of wrapped into that as well.
Absolutely, and the Town of Chapel Hill has continued their stepped up patrols of Franklin Street. Um the statistics and I know, you know, uh I know the old saying about statistics for crime on Franklin Street. In in all the areas we want to see are are down and in some areas are up, but just due to people just calling more and reporting more. So I would I would say we certainly have a handle on that. We still have the relationship with Town of Chapel Hill. You know, if they need us to to assist in their jurisdiction, we're we're available.
I might just add, Mr. Chairman, um I think one of the challenges has been. In contrast, say to the relationship between NC State and Raleigh. Town of Chapel Hill doesn't have that many more officers than we do. I think we have roughly sixty sworn officers. They have roughly ninety. It's not that that it's not that different, but I have a meeting coming up with the new mayor and this will be the first topic on the agenda.
Uh quick question on the on water testing. Am I correct, as we move towards periodic testing, all remediation efforts have been completed? That are correct assumption or?
No, I think the number is eighty-six percent of them have been completed. Some of them are more complex than others. And I know that in some areas, we've gone in per se to fix a lead issue and we found a deeper structural issue. So there may be some things that are outstanding in in that in that realm, but I know our facilities and operations group, that remains a priority. And um eighty-six percent, I think there were a total of five hundred and thirty-five fixtures. Some, I I'm going to quickly get out of my depth, but a number of fixtures and the vast majority have been remediated. Thank you.
Is there, is there a timeline to complete that effort or ballpark?
Um and I I would have to defer to our to our facilities group on that.
Okay, uh we've 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 one last question.
One, uh with regards to the um. The training that um Trustee Bullock mentioned earlier, is there any discussion about including or allowing um? Other university employees to participate in that training? And the the reason that I ask is the lady. Octavia Hardy at Alpine Bagel was the one who effectively ran off Nickel Harris during the brandishing event. And if they're on campus, um and they would be willing to to undertake that type of training, I I think that that would probably be. Good.
Yeah, I think I think any consideration of our training would would be extended to certainly all employees. Um we'd look at contractors as well. I think that's what what we're talking about maybe in that regard. Um that contract employees as well. So yes, sir.
And if I didn't mention staff, um. I I meant to, to include staff, faculty and students. Thanks.
Thank you, Chancellor Battle. We've uh. We've got to, we've got to move on. We've got a long agenda ahead of us and beyond uh our committee. So the next item, a final item uh for information item is uh. An update on information technology, cybersecurity. As with the previous item, we have, if you have specific questions that are better po- um posed in closed session, please hold. Hold those until we go into closed session following Dr. Baker's open session presentation. Dr. Baker?
Hi, I'm I'm Mike Barker, uh Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and Chief Information Officer. My role here is to introduce Paul Rivers, Assistant Vice Chancellor. For Information Security and Chief Information Security Office Officer. To uh follow up on our annual responsibility to report on the pro uh information security program. Paul?
So I I do appreciate the opportunity to address this committee again and appreciate the ongoing interest and oversight in the cybersecurity program for UNC Chapel Hill. Um the agenda that I am proposing for today is to summarize the highlights in the written report that you've received. Uh and to really pick up the conversation where we left off about eight months ago. Um and the highlights that I'd like to cover in the session today is to summarize. The organizational context that is driving the cybersecurity program uh strategy. State what that strategy is and describe the work that's now underway to implement that strategy and then also outline what you should expect. Uh for the update once we're a little more than a year into execution of the strategy. Um to to start with a recap, the slide may look familiar from um May, indeed it is. It's what we said we would do is organize the report on the cybersecurity program according to three basic pillars. It's what our cybersecurity capabilities are, what changes have happened since the last report and then our choices in response to that change. We spent a fair amount of time describing the difference between capability maturity and we said we would describe the program in terms of capabilities. Is that answers more the questions that we're interested in, which is how do we know what needs to be done? How do we know if we're doing it? What are the layers of defense that we have in place? How quickly might we see and respond to cyber events when they occur? And how capable are we of of recovering once, if and when those those cyber events do happen? And so what we also said in this first update, following this format, we would focus on where we are, what that strategy is and where we think we need to go. Uh in the future, just again as a reminder, what we said we would deepen this report in a number of different dimensions. We'll come to that towards the end, but some of those dimensions, again to recap, would be external validation of our assessment, external validation of what our target state is. Uh efficiency models, rigor and and depth of controls. Uh benchmarking against peers and deep dives into very specific security topics. So to to start, the security program, of course, we have to consider the incentives and cost models that the program creates. Uh however, in the end, the larger organizational goals and dynamics will win out. And so recognition of what those larger organizational dynamics around which the security program must be constructed are important. So I wanted to call out the two that I think are the most significant here. Uh the first is that there's a necessity for local delivery of technology. Because of the wide range of technologies and the the wide purposes to which those technologies are put. So it's just a a fundamental fact of of top tier research institutions. That the diversity of technology requires that local delivery, so there's limited opportunities for scale of delivery of some of this technology. Second key organizational fact is that this technology is highly risk differentiated. So we have to be very careful when we're thinking about not over encumbering low risk uses of technology, nor under protecting those high risk uses. So with that context, we can start to formulate a strategy. And I've outlined on this the slide, these five categories for how we might organize all activity that generates security capabilities. So I won't read through those again, but uh the identify, protect, do respond and recover are a way that we can deeply analyze the security capabilities of an institution. And let's express what those organizational dynamics are than using this this language. Uh what this means is that the protective work, like the where people put hands on keyboards and actually do the work. That generates protective controls is distributed at Chapel Hill and must be. However, there's an opportunity to uh centralize and operate at scale the controls that would fall under identify, identify, detect and response. And so what that means is, and to state this strategy in a simple. Sentence is to offset this distributed reality of protection, we have to enhance our. Centralized capabilities and identification, detection and response. This slide calls out a couple of those key implications of what that means. And if I were to summarize identify, I would say this is clarification of roles and responsibilities. And measurement of how well we're doing in aggregate across all the units and schools against those defined roles and responsibilities. And under detection and response, it's really visibility and automation. So how completely can we see the technology that's used on behalf of UNC? Not just those things that are on campus, but all the public cloud infrastructures and beyond. And how quickly can we then uh analyze that data in what's become a big data problem to find those cyber attacks and respond to them quickly? There are still opportunities to implement some of the protective controls in a centralized way, but most of that work has already been done with single sign on. Uh firewalls, network intrusion detection and so on, so there there is still room to for some enhancements in that space. But the vast majority of the work that's ahead of us to implement this proposed strategy will be. Augmenting what we do now centrally in identify, detect and respond. Um one other thing to to call out before I move on. Is that the report calls out a number of things that have already been done uh since we met last in May. And a number of the initiatives that are underway. But I wanted to take some time to describe here what we could expect for the next January update. So those things would be the complete list of the the initiatives required to deliver these capabilities under identify, detect and respond. Uh the timelines, the resourcing requirements. Also, the proposed key performance indicators, how are we, when we say that we're going to assess how well we're doing in terms of implementing our policies and start to measure those. In aggregate across divisions and schools, what are those measurements? Which ones have we implemented? The same thing for uh visibility and our response, the key performance indicators to start to build our institutional scorecard for how well we're doing on cybersecurity. And finally, uh some of the work that's underway now is uh our first. Single organization-wide HIPAA security risk assessment, which traditionally had been done uh kind of division by division. Um and this is really focusing on how we will start to operationalize not only the HIPAA security rule within the institution, but formalize. In the our understanding of our relationship with UNC Health. Uh we're looking at a comprehensive review of our Microsoft ecosystem and the security choices. That have been made in that implementation to see if we would like to answer any of those questions differently. Uh we are looking at the endpoint security that we've deployed, a system that we've deployed across the campus to see how we might. Augment those capabilities, uh again, in alignment with our visibility, detection and response goals. There's a major policy update that's in that's anticipated to be in effect in July. And the reason that is important is that that's our yardstick for how we will measure and assess how well we think we are doing. And so that update significantly. And so that update significantly clarifies what the expectations are across the institution. Uh there is a significant uh work ahead to build a more targeted training program that focuses less on uh general security advice and more on what somebody at UNC Chapel Hill needs to know uh to do their job safely. Uh we are launching a research security compliance initiative to streamline the considerable uh compliance burden that our our researchers, our PIs face without compromise compromising the security of the work that they're engaged in. Uh that is, we just got our our first hire. Uh we just got that except yesterday. So we have the second recruitment up and we expect to have that launched by February. And last, um a major update to our vulnerability management program, which sounds like a fairly technical affair, but it is one of the first operational programs that we will use to summarize and consolidate and present to deans and vice chancellors across the institution how well they're doing uh when it comes to some of our our key performance indicators on cybersecurity. So that that vulnerability management program is essential uh not just for being able to see visibility, but also for the clarification and accountability that I mentioned under identify. And so uh that's that's what I had and uh for uh today's summary, again, if I appreciate any and all feedback or questions at this time or uh comments, of course, on the written document.
Questions, comments? Mr. Everett?
Thank you, Chair. Um thank you, Vice Chancellor. I know the UNC System Office is looking at taking some action for anonymous messaging apps. I'm just curious if you are monitoring those at all in terms of security and risk assessment.
I'm I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, I know the System Office is looking at monitoring um anonymous messaging apps like Yikak and those other things. I'm just curious if you're looking at those for risk assessments at all.
Yeah, we we've we've looked at that, and I think what we're looking for is if those are things that we would like to, as an institution, pursue for reasons other than cybersecurity, right? So i- if if the decision is made that that is something that we need to monitor for, we will see what kind of capabilities we might be able to stand up for that kind of monitoring. That's more difficult than past requests to do similar things, like if we recall a few years back with Huawei and NDAA 889. Um the methods that we would be able to use to identify devices that were manufactured by Huawei would be a little easier than identifying this kind of network traffic. So but I I don't um in terms of the the cyber risk that it proposes, I don't know that that's necessarily a substantial cyber risk, but I acknowledge that there are plenty of other concerns, and the decision still has to be made.
Mr. Bullock?
Yeah, thank you. A quick question on the HIPAA compliance, and that's been one of my sort of things that I've focused on. And could could you um enlighten us on sort of the cooperation that you've had with UNC Health with respect to that? Because there there is clearly some overlap, and we've talked about this at this board about the overlap with the medical school and the uh and UNC Health and this and the HIPAA compliance requirements because of the nature of how the uh providers are tenured and part of the medical school. Could you speak to maybe the cooperation that you have with the UNC Health?
Over the last three or four months, the uh cooperation has been extraordinary, uh as this is really heated up as a topic. First of all, within UNC Chapel Hill, the partnership with our institutional privacy office has been just phenomenal. But also my counterparts on the UNC Health side and Catherine Georgia's counterparts on the UNC Health side, uh there's a very strong commitment to do this structural review and looking at how roles and responsibilities are allocated between the institutions so that we can fully clarify those in a way where it can be operationalized, right? And so uh I I'm very optimistic going into this HIPAA security risk assessment that we have scheduled for the first half of this calendar year that we will tee up those questions and uh be able to formulate a operational or pragmatic implementation of the security role.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate hearing that. I really do. And and we've talked about that on this board, so thank you.
Do you have a question, Mr. Turner? No. All right. Uh that concludes our open session. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Audit Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information and also pursue it to Section 143-318.11A3, A6, A7, and A9.
You've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in closed session.
All right, committee. Do you need this?
Thank you.
Okay. In an effort to please the chair, I will move along because he likes things to move. Uh uh I'm gonna call to order the uh committee um on budget, finance, and infrastructure. Uh welcome to our January meeting. But before before we call the roll, I do want to uh acknowledge and thank Veronica Flashpolar. Are you you're here, Veronica, the new uh Executive Director of the Journal of Met- Stand up so everybody can see you. Thanks for hosting us and allowing us to be here. Really appreciate it, and thanks for your leadership in uh in your new role. We look forward to the great things that you've got ahead. And also wanted to take just a quick uh second to acknowledge uh Governor Fraley, who is uh with us today. Governor, um Board of Governors member, um stand up. I know you you're politician, previous politician. You're used to standing up. Just wanted to thank you for being here. Thank you, sir. All right, um Mr. McClure, will you call the roll, please?
Chair Bullock?
Present.
Vice Chair Codis. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Brenner. Dr. Jones. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Turner. Mrs. White. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Great, thanks. Since we do have things to vote on, it's my obligation as Chair of the Committee to remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Any any conflicts, okay? Hearing none. Uh first item for business is to review the items on the committee's consent agenda for approval this afternoon. Uh the list includes a November 8, 2023 uh approval of the meeting minutes and a lease renewal for the UNC School of Medicine. Um if committee members need a couple of minutes, take take a minute or just a few minutes here, a couple minute or so to look over. Um I assume, and I did read the materials listed. Uh is there any item uh that any committee member uh feels needs to be moved to the discussion portion of our open session agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items. Have a motion from Chair Pryor and a second from Trustee Patel. Uh any further discussion? Hearing none, all those please say aye. Opposed? All right, great, that passes. Um Our first informational item today is a review of the annual comprehensive financial report from our very apt and capable uh Vice Chancellor Nate Knuffman. Vice Chancellor Knuffman.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. Each year, we bring uh a review of the annual comprehensive financial report to this board in the January Board of Trustees meeting, so I'll be going through that material briefly today. And you heard uh Dean Weber reference this earlier today. Uh very pleased to report a clean and unqualified opinion from the North Carolina Office of State Auditor for our results ended fiscal year June 30, 2023. Um I'd I'd really like to thank our finance team, Steve Agostini, Manali Bettendorf, Beth McAndrew, who heads up our financial reporting team. A lot of work goes into producing this report each year. Uh we're very proud of that work. We think we set the bar pretty high in terms of the quality of the report. And uh that's even being recognized uh by outsiders. You see the GFOA uh award that's been been uh given to to the team and for the presentation. So a lot of good work in that, and we will be we will be handing this out to everyone after uh the the meeting today for you to go through. I'll summarize some of the highlights for you. Um first, the net position for fiscal year '23 grew to 4.4 billion, so an increase of just over $400 million or 10 and a half percent from the previous year. Uh revenues were up 7%, a little over 7%. That's mainly driven by research productivity. Uh you see a a big a big jump again in research grants and contracts. Also had an uptick in sales and services. That really is a reflection of getting back to normal operations on the revenue, and you'll see it on the expense side too after COVID. Again, remember, this is fiscal year '23 ended, so June '23. It's compared to '21, '22, so you still had some impacts from COVID in the '21, '22 year. On the expense side, uh expenses increased uh 7.3%. Uh again, largely driven by this increase in supplies and services. Uh also a 6.3% increase in salaries and benefits. Uh taken together, you see those two moving in line at about the the same amount. State appropriations were up 5.9%, biggest item there being our legislative uh increase for salaries. Um COVID support decreased. We'd expect that, again, the dollars, the the support rolling off uh in '23. And then uh lastly, worth noting, on the investment income side, it it increased $207 million. This is really a financial, a paper gain, a book gain, really, on the on the the valuation at a point in time that's not dollars available to the institution. I I think uh and it's it's important to note, when you look at the overall position, I think it year to year, it's really influenced by that investment income number a lot. Even if you control for that and you pull out those $200 million, still an increase in the net position for UNC Chapel Hill. Overall, we feel good about where we're at financially. Um I I would also encourage you, when you get this report, look through, uh again, proud of the work, but but in the back, there's some great information just on trends with with respect to some of the key key indicators of financial health, and I think if you look at those, you'll be encouraged by where UNC Chapel Hill sits. Pro- probably, I'm looking at, yes. Yes. The 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 index referenced is is one of the indicators that that uh outside groups look at as really the probably the most comprehensive and best indicator of overall financial health of the institution. And if you look at our our most previous three years, performance greatly exceeds the 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 seven before it. Again, I just think an overall reflection of where we sit uh financially now. Um So I've summarized some of the highlights from the the annual financial report. It's it's an important piece, but it's part of how we think about financial health at Carolina. Um the annual report, again, it's backward-looking. It's almost a scorecard. How are we doing? Where it's full accrual, backward-looking, and it's a it's great for benchmarking. Of course, there's another, we've we've spent a lot of time building a budget process here in annual operating budget. And that's the other complement to really that annual financial report, the budget being forward-looking, being a great planning and monitoring tool. And I we think really, y- you have to think about these things working together and complementary, to give a full picture. So I'm happy to address any any questions on the financial report uh before getting into an update on the budget.
Any questions? I want to say um again, can't overemphasize the budget reform that this board led and that you helped uh implement at the university that has been adopted across the system of the all-funds budget, forward-looking, gives the Chancellor an opportunity to take a forward look to um uh appropriate resources and in and and each unit to have the ability to uh to look forward and know what they have to work with, right? And 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 then the rating that this university receives uh from our bond raters as a result of having uh uh brought some sensibility to the budgeting process, and you deserve a lot of credit, and so does your team. I know Steve, I think I saw him here earlier, uh in in your team have have done, you know, just it it it's a model I think that a lot of the nation looks at moving forward, so. Uh yeah, Mr. Chancellor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to to echo those those comments. I think everybody probably knows what a strong team and function Vice Chancellor Knuffman has has built. Hopefully, they do. What you might not know is when the Board of Governors promulgated the all-funds budget process, I served on the the Budget Committee, there was there was a lot of resistance from campuses around the system saying that the the challenge was too great and the timeline was too aggressive. And then Carolina came in as the first school in the system to report under the new all-funds format. So for the largest, most complex school in the system to be first under the new all-funds budget process was not only a reflection on the on the strength of Vice Chancellor Knuffman and his team, but sent a very strong signal to the to the rest of the system, made our job on the Board of Governors much easier. So I want to make sure everybody was aware of that of that background.
I am, and I thank you a lot for your leadership on that and and the Board of Governors uh because this board took that took that uh challenge very seriously and and worked diligently uh to push that through, and and it's a team effort. And it really was, and and something to be proud of. Any questions? Comments? Okay, um that'll lead us into a budget update. We're moving forward with the next budget, right?
Great, we are. It's it's hard to believe, but we are are well into planning for fiscal year uh '25. So a- again, um I'm happy to provide an update here today. So first off, uh you can see we we've started this process really formally at the end of October with some instructions to to units across campus. Submissions came in uh just before the holiday. We've really been spending the bulk of our time meeting with every individual unit, um talking through their challenges, their financial position, and opportunities. Um we uh currently are, but we're we're making a lot of progress there. We we're, this will ultimately culminate in bringing a budget recommendations to this uh board for action in March. And then ultimately, we we also uh provide it to the Board of Governors for review in May. So in terms of status, uh we we have received all submitted materials in terms of the dollars uh being requested. The total requests are a roughly $125 million. How does that compare to previous years? Uh we've had a high watermark of $175 million a couple of years ago. I think this is a moving in the right direction in terms of alignment of expectations and what we have to work with. I will say that number is probably slightly overstated. There's some capital in there that's pumping that up a little bit. When you pull that out, it really is uh less than than $100 million. And it also is is really concentrated in a few units. So again, I think we are So again, I think we are seeing some some expectations and our revenue kind of starting to come into alignment. Again, I mentioned the budget meetings. One other piece, we we are using Plan Carolina. I've I've mentioned this to you in the past about replacing our spreadsheet manual process back and forth. We are now using a tool. The reports have been very positive about using that, and so we've been pleased with that to date. So what's new this year? So so first off, the the use of the tool, we think it's really improving consistency. We've got a record, it's easier to use. Spending more time on what it means as opposed to entering and in in chasing document control pieces. The focus area is space allocation. We're continuing to try to get a better handle on space, and we want to understand if your request has some implications for space. We want to understand that and be able to work through that. Contextual metrics, we've had a lot of conversation about a compliment to just putting a table of budget numbers in front of you, but also what is starting to move this conversation toward what we're getting for those dollars and some some indicators on those pieces. Efficiencies are something the System Office is stressing this year in their guidance in terms of making sure the campuses is identifying those and really, really prioritizing reallocation of dollars towards our highest priorities. And then enrollment allocation, we've been we've been working a lot on how we allocate dollars associated with tuition and appropriation. We sent out a guidance in that October timeframe that I mentioned earlier. We noted some priorities. You see those listed to there to the right. We've got a lot of investments we have made historically, so we want to solidify those, what the state is needing from us. Of course, prioritizing, continuing to prioritize campus safety and accessibility, and then our our own excellence. So did want to, before getting into to additional detail on our current thinking, I think it's helpful to step back for a minute and just, again, appreciate where we're at contextually when we start thinking about putting our budget together at UNC Chapel Hill. We it it's worth noting, we are, we are fortunate. The state is in a very strong fiscal position and has and has had the discipline to put to build up some significant reserves there at at the state level. So strong situation there. State continues to be incredibly committed to affordability. And you see that show up whether it's on limits on our fees, what we can increase year over year 3%, whether it's limits on tuition, whether it's even even thinking about the NC Promise Program. So a lot of different programs aimed at that affordability. Think about the UNC system. Enrollment challenges persist across the system, so a different kind of conversation at our sister institutions. And again, being mindful of that as we think about how we're allocating resources, I think is important. The system just just completed a extensive work reworking how enrollment changes generate appropriation from the state. And so, again, being mindful of that and thinking about how that might influence how we allocate resources on the campus. And then lastly, I think we as as we talk about how we budget, as we talk about how we put this together, it's important to know. And this isn't any shock, the our governing bodies, whether it's whether it's this body, whether it's the Board of Governors, whether it's legislature, there's an expectation, a greater expectation that we are more transparent and that we are more accountable. And so we we've, I think we've 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 been moving in that direction. I think we've we published some reports. We now have those available online and really, really trying to move more and more in that direction. So UNC Chapel Hill, how does our how does our budget situation look? Starting on the availability side, we do have some limited dollars available for investment. That's really driven by, we've had growth on enrollment. We've had increases on tuition both on the non-resident undergrad and then on the graduate side. And then, of course, our our research enterprise continues to grow. We're continuing to work through and monitor those tuition and FNA expectations. FNA, of course, being the indirect part of the 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 research side. And then we have built up some modest strategic reserves. We think that's really a function of just being very conservative in how we budgeted in recent years. So that's what we're working with. In terms of of how we're thinking about it and major considerations as we're putting this budget together. I think first, we we had, we launched two new schools very recently, our School for Data Science and Society and our School for Civic Life and Leadership. Both remain important priorities and and we're continuing to work with those schools to make sure the resources are available to match how they grow and how they continue to solidify. The level of investment in campus safety and accessibility, we had a really good conversation already today about the the many needs in that area. I think Trustee Codis described it well with being in a catch-up mode. And I think we're mindful of that as we think about how we're allocating resources and have had some conversation about about a having dollars set aside for being in a position to act, whether it's the after-action report or other things that we've talked about today. I will say one other compliment there is is thinking about how our budget at UNC Chapel Hill complements any request we make of the state. This this may be a top priority that we would put forward for state funding as well in in this space, whether it's cameras or other pieces there. And we we were going to need to be mindful of how these two interact and and complement each other. Startup funds, again, this is really, we we receive requests from many schools in this space. And this is at its heart, it's how do we stay competitive with for top research talent? And and so that's that's a a big component of of many schools in terms of their requests. Thinking about what that means for us as an institution centrally. Support for new programs, we often have schools that have some opportunities to grow. Sometimes before the tuition appropriation materializes, there's need for some bridge or dollars to 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 bridge. We've we've had a lot of conversation about that. Graduate student support continues to be a priority. We've also been discussing the need for a central dollars available to support research equipment and support. We want to make sure research can continue to grow, and we also know that needs sometimes exceed an individual unit's ability to fund those items. And sometimes those items really cut across and benefit more than one. I mentioned the System Office and Legislative Requests. Those are really, again, we want to make sure we're thinking about how they complement the the other pieces. And then and then lastly, the efficiency opportunities. Are we identifying savings there and and do we have ways to reinvest that towards our top priorities? So I'm happy to expand on any of that, address any questions.
Any questions? Dr. Jones?
Thank you for the information that you put out today. Are we planning to put any money aside towards campus repairs, renovation and repairs?
Yes, great question. We are, we we have. Historically, one of the best tools campuses can use to address repair and renovation, especially more on the minor dollar kind of repairs, is the use of carryforward. Historically, our campus has not maximized that. We're allowed by statute to carry forward up to 2 and 1/2% of our operating revenue, and really we have flexibility then to use that and invest that on addressing our R and R. We have been more disciplined about that. In the previous year, we were able to hit that target, and we have some dollars available to put into R and R, which we've been doing, and we plan to continue to prioritize that moving forward. So that that's one strategy. Also, I will note, the state has been more generous in this space in terms of their the allocation set aside to system institutions and to UNC Chapel Hill is greater than it had been previously, which is helpful. The the challenge for us is being able to take those dollars and really make sure we have the ability to follow through with in terms of staffing and in terms of being able to execute projects which we are working toward.
Anybody else? Trustee Codis?
Thank you. Thank you for the update, Nate. You know, I know other schools have looked at areas of efficiency at the department level, and we've talked about that before, especially with the move to more online classes and how we may work better as a system and consolidate some departments. Could you speak to that and and efforts to review department-level finances?
Yeah, sure. So several things on that front, I think. I think, one, I I mentioned that enrollment allocation in and that work in this space. I think it's really important, and I think it intersects directly with the points you're raising. Historically, the campus has allocated tuition and appropriation, and it's really been based on history. It hasn't been based on activity or where student credit hours are are being generated. And we've had an extensive conversation on the campus throughout the fall, and we're really at the final stage of being able to finalize a program or a model where dollars will follow where those credit hours are being, and dollars will will be pulled back where they're in our credit hours. And I think that, I think, so we're encouraged, and we think that's that's a step in the right direction on that piece. We also know the points you raise, I think there's other other work being done within the system that are that are directly related to the point you raised. The ROI study at the system level, again, is looking at return on investment for individual academic programs. They have now sent a follow-up memo to each institution in the system identifying programs that are are not meeting or are not at a certain threshold and ask for follow-up and a lot of extensive information on each of those academic programs. We'll be continuing to look at that and and monitoring that as as an institution as well.
Any other questions, comments? Chair Pryor?
We we have, either, obviously, there are direct financial implications to enrollment decisions. I give a lot of credit to Rachel and her team. She she's been a great partner in in thinking through some of this. I think as an institution, we're trying to get more strategic about about thinking about that. It's one of the few levers that we control at the institutional level that does have a direct financial implication to the resources we have to work with. So we have done some some modeling on that. Of course, some key variables are are, to the extent we have autonomy on tuition. We know there are going to be limits on the resident side, but non-resident, we've had more flexibility on. That's why we've had a conversation and a strategy around increasing that and trying to close the gap with our peers on non-resident undergrad. On the grad side, that's why we've been, you know, a little more aggressive on school pieces. And then on the enrollment side of it, it's it's, you know, obviously, there's an implication on the tuition sides on the non-resident, how many non-residents are here.
I agree. Anybody else? Anybody have anything? You know, I I'll tell you what, and I'm gonna leave it on this, but just looking at the slide presentation and hearing your presentation today with respect to the action items, the priorities, I I want I want to tell you how much I appreciate the fact that I think that this body has recommended almost every one of those items that showed up on your priority list, or at least had had some substantive conversation about them. So on behalf of myself and and the board, I want to thank you for that and for 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 zeroing in on that. And and again, mention this all funds budget. I mean, it is, it is a tool. I I feel very confident sitting here as a member of this board, knowing that the financial status of the university is transparent, solid, and accounted for. And 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 when we had 14, 16 separate budgets running the $4 billion spend, I don't think anybody on this board, on the on the previous board felt very confident that we had a full handle on the on the finances of the university. But but I personally feel very confident that that we're in good hands, so I'll leave it at that. Anybody else? Yes, Trustee Meakin?
Just just a brief comment. I echo those sentiments. And, you know, for those that are new on the board, just two and a half years ago, we had a totally different picture with respect to all that was going on around us and some serious discussions about where we were headed and not knowing the future, and I I think the administration and the faculty also deserve deserve a lot of credit for buckling down and and taking the hit during that time period, and it's just a blessing to see that things have changed.
Thank you. Trustee White?
Yes, this might be a little off topic, but we had discussed at the last meeting executive search firms. We were talking about getting more information.
Yeah, we're we're gonna visit that later. I've had a productive conversation with the chancellor and with the chair and Vice Chancellor Knuffman on that, so I'll just, if it's okay, I'll say more to come on that. Is that okay? All right, thanks. Anything else? With nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn? The board, I have a motion from Chair Pryor and a second from Trustee Patel. All those in favor, aye. Aye, all right, well, the committee stands adjourned. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Knuffman.
You can peruse it at your. If we could, if everybody could go ahead and take a seat so we can try to stay on on schedule. It's good to see everyone, and welcome to the January meeting of the University Affairs Committee. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Hearing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Evans. Mr. Ballantyne. Mr. Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Bryan. Mr. Everett. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Before we get into the approval of minutes, I would like to take a moment and just make a couple of quick comments. First and foremost, every day is a great day to be a Tar Heel. We are all incredibly fortunate to lead the finest public institution in the country towards both light and liberty. Today, we recognize two very important people. Our former Chancellor, Dr. Kevin Guskowitz, served Carolina with honor and distinction. Among his many accomplishments, Kevin guided the university through COVID-19 and the creation of the Carolina Next Curriculum. He revived our statewide advocacy efforts via the Carolina Bus Tour and helped secure Carolina's preeminent position as the leader, protecting the freedoms of thought, speech, and conscience in academia. We thank him for his years of dedicated service. Kevin will always be a Tar Heel. Next, I would like to welcome interim Chancellor Lee Roberts. Now, we all know that Carolina is a very friendly and accepting place. And I think we can all forgive your youthful indiscretion in selecting the wrong side of the 15501 divide. In all sincerity, Lee, you have been unfailingly courteous and thoughtful while wading into what will likely prove to be a very challenging and rewarding role. I look forward to working with you as there has never been a better time to be at Carolina than right now. As the university looks forward, it is important to remain mindful of the shared legacy and ideals uniting Tar Heels across multiple generations. Carolina is committed to cultivating graduates ready to lead our civil society. This requires coupling their intellectual development with a guiding sense of purpose and ensuring we offer the resources necessary for them to be successful. Carolina is committed to uniting both our campus community and our broader society, an ideal that cannot be achieved by dividing ourselves into successively smaller groups, smaller and more disparate groups. Finally, Carolina is committed to protecting the freedom found when one can live within the truth, the ideal embodied in the philosophic fusion of looks at libertas. Attaining these ideals is the basis for supporting our student and faculty veterans and ROTC members. Attaining these ideals is the basis for supporting our student and faculty veterans and ROTC members, founding the School of Civic Life and Leadership, advocating for the humanities, revamping career services and protecting the freedoms undergirding our republic. Our success as a board, as faculty and as an administration is predicated upon how well these ideals are reflected in our graduates as they move beyond Carolina and into the larger world. It is my hope that these attributes imbued in our graduates will make them unmistakable as Tar Heels. That having been said, I'd like to move now towards the, to the approval of the minutes. Is everyone, everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting? If that's the case, may I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
May I get a second? Discussion debate? All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to review and approve the revised faculty salary ranges for the College of Arts and Sciences, the School of Dentistry, the School of Social Work and the UNC Institute for the Environment. Vice Chancellor Becky Manguini is here to present this. Dr. Manguini?
Thank you so much. Greetings and Happy New Year, Chair Jones and members of the committee. It's good to be for, it's good to be before you again today. And I join you in welcoming interim chancellor Roberts to the fun that is the personnel update in University Affairs. As a reminder, under section 600.3.4 of the UNC Policy Manual, the Policy on Delegations of Authority and Granting Management Flexibility in Human Resource Matters, the Board of Trustees has the authority to establish faculty ranges within different academic disciplines based on relevant market data. I come before you today with four requests, not to establish, but rather to update faculty salary ranges. With the Chair's permission, I will walk through each of the requests and invite questions. You may signify at the end your approval for the full complement or by individual unit. First, the School of Social Work seeks approval of a new set of ranges for their tenure track and fixed-term faculty. Up until now, the school has used a single set of ranges for both faculty types, but the market pressures and growing demand for qualified social workers have really rendered a shared structure obsolete. The school has proposed a range structure for tenure and tenure-track faculty and another for fixed-term faculty. In setting these ranges, the school used the AAUDE's mean benchmarks as the midpoint for their adjunct, associate and full professors and the midpoint plus 10% for assistant professors. Overall, this results in a range spread within the defined benchmarks established by the UNC system. And it increases the minimum salary for adjuncts and instructors by about $4,000 and extends the range for full professors by about 6% or $19,000. These ranges were not last updated two years ago, thus the numbers being relatively small. Next up is a set of ranges for the Adams School of Dentistry. As part of a restructure that began prior to the current dean's arrival, the school moved from nine departments to five divisions. And this realignment of the salary ranges to match that structure is one of the final steps of that full restructure process. Chair Jones asked if these ranges include the clinical practice and they do not. Much like the School of Medicine, the Adams School of Dentistry has a clinical practice program that acknowledges and rewards clinical work on top of the base faculty salary. So this is really for their instructional roles. At the last meeting, the, this body approved new faculty ranges for tenure and tenure-track faculty in the College of Arts and Sciences. At that meeting, I forecasted that the new ranges were in development for the fixed-term faculty and would likely come before you at that, at this meeting. And ta-da, here we are. These ranges were previously structured by division, but because of changes in market data since the ranges were last updated and the range of disciplines that sit in each division, that structure was really not working. And so a move to a structure that sets ranges by discipline is really far more prudent. Likewise, the new model differentiates between teaching faculty and research faculty and for the first time has a range for nine-month professors of the practice. So this is really a new structure that we think more closely aligned with the market data. And the last faculty salary range proposal before you is the one for the Institute of the Environment. And they are proposing new ranges, having last updated their existing ranges in 2020 and having done so at that time with data from late 2018. In their proposed range structure, the midpoint is set at the 90th percentile of the AAUDE salary survey data for research faculty and at the 80th percentile for teaching faculty. The new ranges likewise were built in accordance with the UNC system guidance and using a range spread widely understood to be industry best practice. I know that is a lot to take in, but the, the parameters here are relatively straightforward. The adjustments, as you'll see in your materials, are relatively limited. But I'm certainly happy to take any questions on any of these and invite the committee to approve them either by a unit or as a group.
Are there any questions for Dr. Manguini? Seeing none, hearing none. Just for ease of me. Can, can, does anyone have an objection if we do this as a lump? Or do y'all want to break them out individually? Okay, I may, may I motion then to approve the revised ranges? Any discussion debate? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item of business is to review and approve the revised institutional faculty workload policy. Giselle Corby, Senior Vice Provost for Faculty Affairs and, and a Kenan distinguished professor is here to present this item. Dr. Corby?
Thank you, Chair Jones. And it's a pleasure to be here. It's my first time with you all as senior vice provost, actually a year to the day that I started this job. So I'm grateful to be here and excited to share with you a policy that we have had to adopt. You have before you, for your review, the UNC Chapel Hill Institutional Policy on Faculty Workload. The UNC System Office submitted a proposal to the Board of Governors in their May 2023 meeting to supersede section 400.3.4 of the UNC Policy Manual on Monitoring Faculty Workloads. The Board of Governors approved the new policy in July of 2023 at their board meeting. The main changes to this policy are allowing the flexibility to consider the individual faculty workloads rather than institutional workloads, considering the entirety of a faculty's member's workload, not just the teaching responsibilities, emphasizing accountability by requiring annual work plans and evaluations and clarifying the responsibilities of the Boards of Trustees, Chancellors, Provosts, Deans, Department Heads and individual faculty members, as well as charging institutions with developing policies that are consistent with the system policy that also consider their individual missions and circumstances to have those processes for feedback and review. Earlier this fall, the provost charged a work group, which was led by myself along with Associate Provost LaShania Thompson, consisting of faculty, administrators, senior associate deans and staff and senior administrators to develop this policy. We worked over the last three months, actually between October and December, to develop the institutional policy, soliciting feedback from deans and senior associate deans along the way. I also want to acknowledge the Office of Institutional Research and Assessment, Dr. Lynn Wilford, for the foundational policy on teaching workloads that serves as a starting point for this current iteration. I am happy to answer any questions about the policy. This is something that's required of us in, at UNC Chapel Hill. And this first step will allow each of the campus units then to derive their individual policies to be in compliance with the Board of Governors' policy.
Are there any questions for Dr. Corby? Trustee Ballantyne? Trustee Ballantyne?
Thank you so much. I was just wondering if you had an early sense of what the buy-in was. I know it's a change to have such a statement like this, but that's, it's gonna be important. And obviously it won't meet the goals and be successful if, if there isn't buy-in.
That's actually a really interesting question, trustee Ballantyne. This work already happens. The documentation of faculty workload already happens across our campuses. It happens unevenly, admittedly, but each year there's an expectation that faculty and their supervising entity will review their work plan and agree on what the work plan will be for the year. The reporting requirements are gonna be a big step. And so that's the place where we're, we're working closely with Michael Barker. He's been part of, it was a, an ex officia member of the committee to make sure that we're in lockstep in how we need to report. The campus unit policies, each unit will need to have their policies in place as of September of this year. And our first report to the system office will be October of 2025. So it's a brisk pace. And that's where the challenge, I think, is going to be. Not the buy-in for the policy, but really how we're making sure that we have what we need in place to document and report.
Trustee Meekins?
Yeah, the brisk pace was what I was concerned about. Do you feel like you've had sufficient time to?
Not at all. No. At every committee meeting, when I, I actually served it on the, on the System Office Committee around regulations to try to stay as, so that we're staying as close as possible to what the system office is asking us and really have a sense. And at every meeting, there was a complaint about how quickly we're needing to do this. We actually, and I have to thank, really thank our committee members because our target was actually your March BOT meeting. But we really understood how hard it would be to the implementation of this. Again, going back to the documentation that would be needed for the reporting. So we, we, we pushed our committee to even make, to even at sort of a frenzied pace to get this done so that you all had it for consideration at this meeting. But no, we haven't, we don't have enough time.
Do you feel satisfied with the product though, as far as?
I, I actually, I, I'm incredibly grateful to the committee and the work that they put into, to bring what I think is not only in compliance, but also speaks to the spirit and the letter of the policy.
Trustee White?
Thank you. This is good information. Thank you for doing this project. I have one question. On page nine of the policy, there's a paragraph that says the School of Medicine and the Dental School are not included on the, the call some productivity study, the national study, and that the university will monitor the teaching loads using standards by accreditation and professional bodies. You know, it's on page nine. What, who, like, who's the university? Who is that that's monitoring those, I guess, schools? And then what accreditation or what professional body, like what standards are being used?
So each of those professional schools have their own accreditation standards. And oftentimes the teaching workload of the 24 contact hours that's codified in the regulations doesn't quite apply in a clinical, in these, in these, in the clinical teaching that happens in these settings. And so one of the things that's gonna be very important is that each campus unit then sort of creates their policy that's in accord with their accreditation body. And we see this, it's pretty stark in medicine and dentistry, but we also see this in law and other places where there's accreditation standards in terms of the teaching loads.
Any other questions? To, to trustee Ballantyne's point about faculty buy-in, Dr. Morocco was involved with the policy creation. And I'm, I'm not sure if, Beth, would you like to speak to, to that?
Oh, there you are, Beth. Come on up.
Yes, and thank you for allowing me to, to have a floor for a moment. Just to say that I was on that committee that worked incredibly quickly and hard. And, you know, for us, it was an opportunity as faculty to really encompass the broad range of things that we do as faculty outside of just the teaching contact hours, which are of course critical. But in terms of, you know, mentoring students, serving on dissertation committees, our research. I mean, of course, as you heard during the financial report, we're a $1.2 billion research enterprise at this university, much of it conducted by faculty and engaging our students, as well as the clinical responsibilities, the service. You know, we, we also do a tremendous amount of service. So it was an opportunity to take a step back and think about how do we operationalize? How do we operationalize all the things that we do as faculty and accurately, you know, operationalize them and count them? And I think too, this could be a big step toward consistency and equity in terms of faculty workload. And also just, you know, even giving our stakeholders an idea of the broad range, the volume and the content of what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and speaking with both of you, I, I think that this is really an excellent opportunity for, for us to understand the broad range of, of things that our faculty do and, and really have a good chance to, to create kind of a baseline for how we're gonna use resources going forward. And it, it comes along at a, at a very opportune time with regards to looking at class availability, issues with registration and whatnot. So I think that this is a, that it's very timely that this, that this is being done. Are there any other questions for Dr. Corby? Seeing none, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the revised policy? May I get a second? Any discussion or debate? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for your time. These items will be placed on the consent agenda for tomorrow's, for the board, board's full approval tomorrow. The next two items are for information only. Dr. Corby, again, is here.
Stay here.
To give us some information about the Office of Faculty Affairs. Dr. Corby?
Thank you, trustee Jones. As I mentioned, this, a year to, actually the day, the 17th of July, of January last year, I started as senior vice provost for Faculty Affairs. And I thought it fitting that you all, given that the, the strong focus for our provost in terms of faculty and faculty success, faculty advancement, it would be important for you to understand what we're doing in those lines. And particularly because teaching and learning are the primary services of our university. It's what we offer to our state and to our society. Recruiting and retaining high achieving and high quality faculty members is going to be the most determinant of, one of the highest determinants of the quality and the success of our university and fulfilling its mission. And so I'm honored to be in this role, to be able to support this work in support of our students. This is, I think Chris might have had, Provost Clemens might have had a, a smaller vision initially of what a focus on faculty might be. But it became pretty apparent very quickly that we really needed to have a, at least a resting place for all of this work, this Office of Faculty Affairs. And this is the mission that we've come up with, to foster an inclusive environment and support faculty members across all career paths by collaborating with academic units, developing exceptional talent and implementing comprehensive programs to support faculty success. This is what we do and how we do it. We are a small but mighty team, myself. Dr. Erin Malloy is the Associate Provost for Faculty Development and Success. And with her coming into the provost's office, also brought the Center for Faculty Excellence, one of our jewels in terms of teaching and learning and supporting faculty across the university. LaShania Thompson is our Associate Provost for Faculty Affairs. And with her coming into the provost's office, actually before me, brought wealth of, and depth of expertise around faculty affairs, faculty HR and faculty policies. This is who we serve. This is who is serving our students. You can see our breakdown by Health Affairs and Academic Affairs. Over 4,000 strong faculty total, 2,700 in the Health Affairs schools and 1,400 in our academic affairs. We've focused on these three areas, faculty development and leadership development, mentoring, support. Mentoring, support, leadership development programs, development opportunities. These investments in our faculty are in fact an investment in our students. Faculty advancement, the moving, making sure faculty are progressing as they should and recognized as they move through the promotion and tenure process, through recognition and awards, the education and training and hiring and retention of our faculty. And then finally, belonging and wellbeing. The impact of the pandemic, as you all just recently mentioned, has been incredible and long lasting amongst the faculty. And this focus on wellbeing, measuring and mitigating COVID impacts and faculty support programs is the third area that we're focused on. I am a scientist by training, and so I believe in things being data-driven. I believe in sort of mixed method, qualitative and quantitative methods. And so this environmental scan and using data to be able to drive the work that we do was, is foundational. You'll see, I've been limited in terms of the amount of time, so I'm going to move very quickly through, but I'm happy to bring back any other data that you might be interested in. When we started this work back in the spring of last year, we looked at the coach data. We interviewed all of the deans in the, across our units. We looked at the data from the Center for Faculty Excellence. We looked at our data from institutional research and assessment, as well as talk to anybody that would want to talk to us about faculty affairs, to be able to make sure that what we were building met the needs of faculty and therefore met the needs of our students. These are some of the things that came out, stood out for us and that drove the work that we did. Both tenure and tenure-track faculty have considerable dissatisfaction about the clarity of the policies and expectations of promotion. This is, for many, a black box about how they move through the process. There were concerns about support for promotion from associate, particularly from associate to full professor. It's a, it's a, one of those weak links where we lose people. And then also concerns about the effectiveness of mentoring for faculty in their advancement. And then finally, overall, and over and over again, we found that compensation in the coach data in particular, year over year, has been the worst, ranked as number one as the worst aspect of working at Carolina. As we talked with others about these data, we decided to sort of flip how we were going, use these data and then really use that as a fulcrum to think about what the work that we would be doing. We're working and planning and, and committed to strengthening and expanding of the mentoring programs through centralized, data-driven and data-derived programming and support for mentoring across our campus. Investing in the professional development programs that are tailored to career stage, particularly with the focus on mid-career faculty as one of the weakest links that we have. Clarity, transparency and equity in our policies and standards should be, to me, baseline for our appointment, promotion and tenure processes, as well as employing comprehensive training around our campus for those that are anywhere along the way, not just faculty, but the administrators in this work. Exploring technology to be able to support things like our faculty workload policies, as well as the campus-wide recognition and evaluation of, of faculty for nominations of awards, as well as to the national academies and other honorific societies. Thinking about ways to build collaborations around this and then support and maximize our faculty recruitment and hiring programs so that they're as, as effective as possible. These are some of the ongoing initiatives. This is our, our Center for Faculty Excellence and our, their five areas of focus. Focused on mentoring, supporting, enhancing the teaching that we're doing, learning how to lead and leadership development programs, developing a community of scholars that are working in these, in different areas, and then supporting research. These are data from our Center for Faculty Excellence and who we're serving in our Center for Faculty Excellence. You can see across the board, we are not only fact, supporting fixed-term and tenure-track faculty. The adjuncts that were mentioned earlier are also those that we're supporting. The other category or non-faculty might be graduate students, postdoctoral fellows, our younger colleagues that are coming up that need to have the skills to be able to teach and to support our students. You'll see in our audience, several of our, the members of our most recent leadership development program, the Provost's Distinguished Faculty Leaders Program, is a cohort of Carolina's most outstanding mid-career faculty. Again, a focus on that mid-career and senior faculty that have the opportunity to develop greater insight into provost-level campus strategic initiatives and academic processes, strategic planning, budget issues, et cetera, giving our best and brightest a window into what it's like to stay at Carolina and to be part of what we do at Carolina in terms of supporting faculty and students. These five individuals participate in leadership development programs and also are working on specific projects within the Office of Faculty Affairs. Some of them are in the audience now. I think Spencer Barnes is here and Kim Bogus might be here as well. Do you all want to stand if you're here? I think Kim. If you see them, say hi to them, please. They're very excited to get to meet all of you all. As we think about the suite of programs that support faculty, this innovation that came from Associate Provost LaShania Thompson is really thinking, rather than discrete and individual programs, thinking about program as a suite of faculty support programs that aims to advance the success of all members of our faculty community at Carolina. It's rooted in our philosophy that we actually have an obligation to faculty when we bring them here. Regardless of rank or track, we believe they can thrive at Carolina, or else we shouldn't have brought them here. And we have a responsibility as the Chief Academic Office for their success. And so this suite of programs that we're about to launch, the design of, is whole life cycle, looking at the entire career arc of faculty, looks at ways to connect and advance faculty and is holistic and integrated with work that's already been successful on our campus. Other new initiatives is the focus on mentoring support, as I mentioned earlier, faculty development. And then again, because our faculty are the key drivers of the educational experience of our students, continued and deepening focus on teaching and learning and support for faculty's success there. We did some strategic planning in the fall, in the summer of last year. And one of the key pillars for this is the integration of the Center for Faculty Excellence, and that has been incredibly successful over the last several months. The strengthening, the connection with the Office of Faculty Governance. And I have to say, working with Jill Moore and Beth Morocco during the events of August 28th was one of the sort of galvanizing and forging episodes. The tarnished silver lining in that horrible experience to be able to work collectively together to support faculty who are supporting students in the wake of that event. And then the initiation of a faculty development liaison networks, bringing the best practices together so each of the department's units can learn from each other rather than recreating the wheel. These are our strategic directions, building this infrastructure. As I said, it's only been a year that the Office of Faculty, it may not even have been a year because it didn't start last year on January 17th, to build this infrastructure for success and then change the culture for faculty belonging and success at Carolina. This new emphasis, renewed emphasis that Provost Clemens has put forward, I think is important, particularly important as we think about the ways we support and serve our students. So with that, I'm coming back to the beginning. These are the policies that we are working on now or will be working on. And we just wanted to make sure you had a preview to know that these will be coming back. All of these will require your approval in one form or of another. I think the most substantive change was the faculty workload policy. Coming down the pike is the post-tenure review policy, which is just a modest change as well as the regulations on teaching and effectiveness, and those will come before this body as well. And with that, I'll stop and see what other questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation today and, and for the policy revision discussion before. Are there any questions for Dr. Corby? Trustee Evans?
Thank you for your presentation. You know, I served on faculty for two years. And I told you when I joined this board that I wanted to make it easier to work for and do business with the University of North Carolina. So I just believe that the interim chancellor shares this, the provost certainly does. If the faculty would know how much we value them and bring within the policy changes that you're currently researching, but also those that come up day to day, be part of a solution-driven process, not to endure the inefficiencies and the headaches that, that accompany their day-to-day life, but frankly, be part of proposing solutions. And we could all partner together for that. Morale matters so much. I don't like seeing that compensation is as troubling an issue as it says. And I don't know enough yet to understand why. So maybe we'll follow up about that. But if there are things that we can do, and they're so important to help morale while we're looking at compensation, that would be great.
Yeah, and that's, thank you so much, trustee Evans. That means, I know means a great deal. The, the support of this body means a great deal to our faculty. I, I certainly will be in touch as I think about things. The, you know, our, there's not much I'm going to be able to do about compensation. But what I can do is the, all the other parts of faculty life to really look at, think about and, and really turn over how we can make those better and let people feel valued. I will say that Associate Provost Erin Malloy has done a tremendous job in leading our campus around awards. Teaching awards in particular, we have 25 nominees that are going up to campus, going up to system office. We, we have been successful in the OMAX Gardner Award from the system office last year, the Wholehouse Award this year, all because of Erin's efforts. And that means a great deal to folks to be recognized in that way. The first time that any of us that were elected to the National Academies of Medicine, Science and Engineering were recognized was last year. And it was a tremendous event to see all of your colleagues who, you know, this, for many of us, this is the pinnacle of our career to be recognized in that honorific society. And that was orchestrated by, by Erin's efforts and, and in a large part fueled by Chris's recommendations that we need to have our faculty recognized. They are outstanding and we are behind in that as well. And so it's, it's been wonderful to work alongside this team.
Trustee Ballantyne?
Dr. Corby, two quick things. One, I guess, following up on, on the morale. Do you have regular university-sponsored social events for faculty?
No, no, no social events, not regularly sponsored. But it's actually one of the things that it's, as we are sort of coming out of kind of the work of this policy and the frenzied pace, it's one of the things that we've talked about is regular touchpoints with, for you to, you all to know what we're doing with chairs, department, with deans, as well as faculty. Regular touchpoints that they are aware of what is happening. I think oftentimes when there's a gap in knowledge or information, you know, our anxieties sort of creep in and we think that folks are not thinking about us or maybe think about things in a more nefarious way. And so we, we're, we're trying to be very intentional about making sure that we have a regular touchpoint with faculty. One of the, the key things that we're doing is actually bringing all of these, all of the individuals around that are doing work in faculty affairs across our campus. The first time that's happened is actually going to be happening next week. All of the, the individuals that are responsible or involved in the promotion and tenure process, faculty development work on, in any of the units on campus have been invited. And the first time that's happened is going to be next week. And so it won't be social. They'll be working, but it'll, our, our hope and intention is that we can create sort of an intellectual community, a community of practice for best practices and to learn and grow together.
And, and one more question. I'm familiar with faculty mentoring students. Do you also have mentors for new faculty?
Yeah, those mentoring programs, they're agnostic typically in terms of who is being mentored. The mentee and has a set of responsibilities, but the mentor also has quite a number of responsibilities. And the work that the Center for Faculty Excellence has done in that regard in terms of Team Advance, which is a grant that they had from the National Science Foundation, to develop and, and mentoring educational program has been the foundational work of what we're going to be offering to campus on a much broader scale. We're also working with Beth Mayer-Davis and her group around the graduate student experience, particularly in the wake of the events of August 28th, and what we can do to support, elevate and strengthen the connection between graduate student mentees as well as faculty. What's, what's in that space and what can we do? How can we, as those that are supporting faculty, support students in that, in that way?
Trustee Codis?
A quick question on the survey data. The overall compensation selected as the worst aspect, does that, in your view, line up with our faculty salary ranges, including what we just approved? Does that line up with that data? Would an objective observer look at our faculty salary ranges and say, there's a point here or not? I just don't have context.
Yes.
When you take a look at our faculty salary ranges benchmarked against peer institutions, that data against this survey result?
So I just actually, during this meeting, got a set of data that would, that answers that question. And in quick perusal, since 2013, so for the past 10 years, benchmarks against our 15 peers, some private, some public, we have not only always been below the median at a full professor, associate professor and assistant professor, but in full professor, we've been below the median and divergent, continue to diverge over the last 10 years. So our faculty salaries are way below based on benchmarks of our peers. So that's the beauty of qualitative and quantitative data. People think something, what do they think and why? And so there's a triangulation there in that unfortunate example.
Is that also across the board or, or is there, I don't know, is there focus on certain schools and programs or? And maybe this is a topic, I, I think this is a really interesting topic that I'd love to learn more about. But I want to be careful just with broad generalizations. And if you unpack that, would we find that that's actually pertains to certain cohorts? Or is it really in fact a broad-based point?
I think that definitely would be data that I would want to look into some more. As I said, I literally got the data while we were sitting here, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's really interesting data. And it shows the importance of us making some hard decisions and allocating resources appropriately to fund additional compensation. We have to look at metrics. We have to let the dollars follow those metrics as well, which we're not doing currently. When you have a school that just gets the same or 2% or they're all allocated the same, you're, you're in a socialist society, which tends, tends to lead to a lot of dissatisfaction and, and disincentives for high performers. So I'd like to see us be a little bit more entrepreneurial and have those dollars follow the high performers and, and look at where we have to make cuts. And that's going to be tough, but I think that will make those that remain a lot more happy with, with salary ranges.
Any other questions, comments? Trustee Evans?
Is, is there a philosophy underlying or a history underlying our tolerance for trailing our peers on faculty compensation?
I wouldn't be the one to be able to answer that question. Yeah.
So I've been here long enough to remember, there was, back in the mid 2006, 2007, a chancellor articulated that we would try to be at 80% of our peers. And we started on that path, and these were the glory days of high raises. And this was before, just before the 2007, 2008 financial retrenchment or crisis, whatever you want to call it. When we came back from that, the, the budgets for compensation particularly were never as generous again from the state. Moreover, and I think this is caustic to Marty's point, we often get an across-the-board cost of living. I mean, it's called a legislative increase, but there's no discretion. And so you can't aisle on excellent faculty. So what we've done to compensate is used retention. This is a terrible strategy because you reward people for looking around and that encourages people to look around. And what happens is inevitably. And what happens is inevitably we lose them. And what we should be doing is locking down good people with discretionary raises. But it's really hard, even if you have the money, because you've been entrepreneurial, to apply the money to those discretionary raises when you don't have what we call the annual raise process that allows some discretion in the amount you give. And I remember a year as physics chair when we had like a 1%, but, but it was discretionary. And so some people got eight, which means at least eight people got nothing for the one that got eight. You know, you can do that. You have to be able to measure performance. That's this workload. It's connected to performance and you have to have the discretion. So I think I would argue for more discretion in addition to more money. The discretion is probably more important than the money, so. But we don't have this target that we've articulated in public and asked people to help us meet. And as Giselle said, I just saw this data too, and I was, I'm always asking the question, is this, is this faculty grumbling? Is it a perception? Everybody thinks they're always underpaid or is it reality? We haven't dug into the data, but it's the first time I'm seeing something that makes me want to dig in and say, maybe it's, it's reality. It wasn't in the presentation earlier because literally we're at the beginning of this process. We could certainly have, share this Malcolm later and get a, get a conversation going. So we'll put the data together into something to share with the board. So you know where we stand once we, once we digest it and are comfortable that we understand it. Yeah. A quick follow-up to that, Provost Clement. So if we could maybe put together a policy change or recommended legislative change that would address that issue and allow for more discretionary allocation. I think that's something that the board could advance and get done.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. First, we want to do the cost of living, but having more discretion, some fraction.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, Dr. Corby, thank you and congratulations on your one-year anniversary. Our final informational item is an update on the School of Civic Life and Leadership from Provost Chris Clements and Dean of the College Parts and Sciences, Jim White.
All right. First, just to point a personal privilege, I'd like to thank Giselle for her year of service. We had no Office of Faculty Affairs and you see the amount of work that's, that's coming. Also my team, we had a provost transition team that ran for a few months to look at us versus other places. Other provost's office, almost all of them had some centralized faculty affairs. And so I had, in my wildest dreams, I didn't think we would get to where we are. And it's a testimony to her leadership, to LaShania, Erin, and Amy Lockler-Hotel, who helped us on the transition committee. So thank, thank to all of them for the work. Coming up, Jim, and we'll, we'll get going on the School of Civic Life and Leadership. School of Civic Life and Leadership, you know all about. I don't need to give you the history. This is an update on where we stand. For that, I'm going to turn it over to the dean, who has been closely involved in tracking the progress of our current efforts. So Jim White.
So thank you all for giving us some time here to give you an update on where we are with the School of Civic Life and Leadership. I'd like to give you a couple of informational items and then I want to turn it over to Professor Sarah Truul to give you more detail. She's the current interim director and dean and has a lot of information on what the faculty have been up to. I would like to begin however, by saying I'm deeply embarrassed that my shoes are nowhere near as nice as the provost's shoes. So I will, I'll work on that. So my, my informational items, as you hopefully know, we are literally right in the middle of our search for a new director and dean, for the permanent director and dean. We hope to, that should be wrapped up by the, at least from a, all the, the interviews will be done next week. And the, I look forward to the search committee forwarding their thoughts. And then I look forward also to any of you and all of you who would like to discuss candidates. I'd be wide open and very much welcoming your thoughts on the candidates as well. And we'll spend some time collecting information, the provost and I, and then we will sit down and talk. And we'll also be talking with you folks. I would say that the, we have four excellent candidates, one of whom is in the room. Also want to give you an update. We have been working on the budget for the School of Civic Life and Leadership since actually, it's been about a year since we began working on the budget. Just want to give you an update. We are narrowing down what we think are the short-term and the longer-term costs. This is a, we are looking to build out a, a department of at least 20 faculty. And I wanted to let you know that that, in, in the college, that's typically in the nine to $10 million range for the built-out faculty. It'll take us a while to get to that point in terms of recruiting, but we look to, over the next couple of years. And I'm working with senior associate deans Kate Hens and Elizabeth Engelhardt, who are sitting over here, to figure out how do we go from where we are now in terms of faculty to where we want to be? What's the best timeline to do that? What's the best strategy to do that? Be happy as we put together those numbers to, to share those with you as we, as we get them. Right now it's, we're preliminary, but I want you to know that we're, we're getting very close, I think, to where we want to be. Are there any questions on those two items before I turn the, if you don't mind, turn the microphone over to Professor Truul? Okay, then I would like to bring Professor Sarah Truul up to, to the podium.
Thank you, Dean White, Chairman Jones, members of the board, Chancellor Roberts. I appreciate the opportunity to once again be before you and update you on the progress of the School of Civic Life and Leadership. Since the convening of the inaugural faculty in October, and since I last appeared before you all in November, we have made significant progress. You heard some of that from Dean White here just now. I'm pleased to report that in addition to the remarks that he gave, we have designed a minor, which I submitted to the administrative boards for approval. And I'll circle back to that here in a moment to give you the details on that. But first I just want to pause and say how proud I am of our faculty. The nine inaugural faculty were tasked with developing a new curriculum, including the creation of a minor and a new course, new courses really to accompany it, establishing documents for promotion and tenure, writing a job ad, which also put forward a vision for the school and for many of them serving on a search committee for a permanent director and dean. We have also hired a business officer for the new school who will be starting February 1st. Through this process, they have showed unwavering commitment to the school and to its values. I want to thank Deans White and Engelhardt and Provost Clements for putting together such a great initial team. Thanks to the selection of this particular group of faculty and their dedication to the work, much of the reception on campus has been incredibly positive. As I've said before, a major key to the success of this school is integration across the college and making our minor accessible, not just to students who currently reside in the humanities, but as broadly as possible, applicable. The minor we have created is a testament to this belief. The minor is intentionally designed to be interdisciplinary and to appeal broadly to a wide range of undergraduates, regardless of their specified major or their ideal career path as they move forward. The minor consists of three required courses and two electives. The first two required courses are foundational. The first foundation's course is an interdisciplinary course that provides the theory, principles, and history of civic life. The first part uses classical texts of politics, philosophy, law, and literature to examine the role of the state in society and the tensions that of course exist between individual freedom and the power of the state to keep order. The second part of the course focuses on the American founding to better understand the unique elements of the American democratic experiment. The third part applies the theory, principles, and history from parts one and two to a set of controversies and also tensions in modern civic life, which we're all very familiar with. The second foundational course that is required for the minor focuses on the ideas and practices necessary to analyze arguments and disagree productively and compassionately, especially at a time of deep polarization in American culture. The goal of this course is to master the art of deliberation and also persuasion, especially the ability to effectively communicate with those who have different views. We believe this is crucial to the minor and also critical for democracy. This course will take advantage of the events offered by the Program for Public Discourse, as well as provide students with the opportunity to engage in a series of debates on those contentious and contemporary issues that I mentioned earlier. The minor then requires two elective courses. Here we grouped a whole selection of courses that are available into three specific categories for students to choose from. Again, depending on what their career pathway is and maybe what fits best with their current major. These categories are scientific evidence and engagement, intellectual history and humanities, and civics and political institutions. The culmination of the minor is a capstone course that requires students to either participate in an internship or a service learning project with an institutional partner in the state or produce an original project. That could be a podcast, a blog, a series of op-eds. There's, there's lots of choices there. But the idea is for either this internship and service learning project or this other creative project to tackle a contemporary issue in American democracy. We're very much still in the process of developing this capstone course as it will be the culmination of the minor. And I would like to ask for the board's assistance, if it possible, in identifying institutional partners that we can join with to offer our students internships or service learning opportunities across the states. We seek partners across a wide variety of institutions, could be the legislature, could be the courts, bureaucratic departments, nonprofits, just to name a few, but we're very much open to suggestions. The idea and the goal is to help our students gain civic-minded experience and the opportunity to practice what they've learned throughout the minor. I have asked Matt Kotzen, philosophy professor and inaugural faculty member of the School of Civic Life and Leadership, to chair the subcommittee on developing this capstone course. So if you have ideas for partnerships, you're welcome to either share them with him and I can provide your email or of course with me as well, as we start to put together that final course. I am confident we are on the right path and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to pursue our goals and contribute to the intellectual development of and commitment to civic education among our students here at Carolina. Like to open it up for any questions that you have, but it's been a busy few months, but an incredibly exciting few months as well. Thank you for your time.
Professor Truul, thank you for your work and, and that of the inaugural faculty. Are there any questions? Trustee Bullock?
Thanks. I really appreciate that. I, I want to remind everybody that it was a year ago at this January meeting that this board passed a resolution in support of the development of the School of Civic Life and Leadership and moving that forward in an expeditious way. And there was pushback that it couldn't be done this quickly. There was the thought that something like this couldn't be accomplished in that, in a, in a relatively fast timeframe. And to Chairman Jones's point, it's always a great day to be a Tar Heel. And when you're a Tar Heel, there's, there's very few things that can't be done. And, and I've almost got a little tear coming in my eyes hearing the, the coursework that is being proposed at, at this university and in the School of Civic Life and Leadership. Because I've, I said it from, from that chair and I've said it from this board that this, this school has the potential to be a game changer nationally. And I think with this type of commitment that you've shown, Dean White, Provost Clements, and the entire team, Professor Engelhardt, I see you sitting over there, that, that the entire team's effort on this, it, it, we are changing the game and we are providing the next generation with the tools they need to lead this state and lead this country in a productive way without sliding into name-calling and, and unproductive dialogue. And, and, and this is, this, this is the reason this board proposed it. And I just, it's just, it's really overwhelming. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bullock.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Thanks. Professor Truul, it's always, we've, we've been, it's like I've been engaging with you on this path for a while now. And I, I think to, to Trustee Bullock's point, it's exciting to actually hear you articulate some of that and actually wondered, will you send, can, can we get some of that outline?
Yeah, so I'm happy to give you a general outline as far as the actual syllabi. I want to wait until the administrative boards have a chance to review them, simply so we're following all the procedures. But yes, I can absolutely share with you, you know, the remarks about the minor and kind of give you the general outline of it.
And even just the update on who to contact with?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yes.
That would be great. And?
Worthcoming.
Timeline for when a student could actually get that minor and it's five classes?
Right, so submitted the minor proposal here this last week. So that is again before the administrative boards at this time, including those courses that are foundational to completing the minor, also are under review currently. And so our expectation is that students can start taking these courses in the fall, assuming all gets approved, as we would expect it to be. And so we'll have students then. They're welcome to enroll in the minor then. We'll be advertising as such, hopefully to a broad swath of our undergraduates, again, trying to hit all the different fields, disciplines, and interests across campus.
Well, again, outstanding. I actually loved the, the science part too, and I'm interested to have some more follow-up on that.
Yeah, I mean, just a, a quick note on that. I mean, you all know that computer science, biology, this is where a lot of our student growth is happening. And it's just as critical in my mind that they have the same type of training, the same abilities, as Trustee Bullock talked about, to interact and engage with the communities that they move into, pluralistic as they likely will be. And also their patients, their clients, whoever it is that they're working with. So they need the same foundational skills and I think it will sit really nicely with whatever major students choose.
Great work.
Thank you.
Trustee Codis?
Thank you. A couple of thoughts on the, I guess, the second and the third class. So the second class, would it meet the requirements of NC Reach Act perhaps? And therefore be an option to fulfill that requirement?
That's a possibility. The way the second course is currently drafted, we are trying to get it approved as a Communication Beyond Carolina course, right, for our curriculum purposes here. And so there might be other ways that we can also, you know, check other boxes. I will, I will definitely look into that. But the CBC credit is also really important because as you all know, that's a big part of the curriculum and we expect that to draw students into the minor and into these classes as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's an option there for making sure we meet the NC Reach requirements, have that be our option for that and then request funding for it, tying back into the, the need for that. And if we got ahead of that and did that before NC Reach passes fully, I think that would be even better perceived. Secondly, the, in the capstone course, there might also be potential for partnership with school of government or the law school, again, looking at some potential funding there as well for that capstone course. So I'd say those are two areas to explore.
Perfect. Thank you for the suggestions.
Any other? Chair Prior?
I'd just like to say thank you so much for all of your hard work and that of the team. And I know you're not done yet, but thank you for everything thus far and we're almost there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I do have one quick question. What is the, the, in the, in the course, is it SCL? Is that going to be the course designation?
We have four-letter course designations, so it is listed as SCLL.
Okay.
Yes, good question.
That's a big, that was a, I remember you saying what a big step that was.
It was a big step, yeah.
To get the course designation.
Might seem small, but trust me, it's a big step.
Well, for someone that's getting ready to move into their basement, you know, I'll take the smart steps. Any other questions, comments for Professor Truul or Dean White or the provost?
I'd like to, of course, thank Professor Truul and Dean White. Marty, you raised the Reach Act. What, what I think might be interesting would be for our faculty to work on what we would see as a reading list and curriculum for a civics course so that we don't undergo the criticism that it's being imposed, but rather it's a collaboration. I think that would be an opportunity missed in other states that could be a place for Carolina and North Carolina to lead. So just a, a thought. I know this is not the legislature, but you, you understand them and you understand what's at stake here. So just an idea.
Yeah.
So just a, a quick two-finger as a political scientist on this question. And I teach our foundational sort of American civics course already. And everything that was in the Reach Act, I, I teach, right? So I don't teach everyone at UNC. I certainly wish I did. But all the students that are going through my courses are hitting, you know, those five reading assignments that were listed in the Reach Act. I think they're probably, I mean, I can tell you, they are in the syllabus that we have designed right now. But to Provost Clement's point, I think there is a wide variety of other materials that, you know, faculty certainly with other input and other people across the state might want to see too. So I really like the idea of being collaborative on that process. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time and your work, especially to the interim, to the inaugural faculty in the school. I think it's really important that we, we recognize them as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Board.
That concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the University Affairs Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318 dot 11A, 1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information. And also pursuant to Section 143, 318, 11A, 5 and A6.
May I have a second? Any discussion, debate? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you.
Welcome everyone and to the January meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives. As Chair of the Committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Mr. McClure, if you'll call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Chair Codis.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Mr. Brenner. Ms. Evans. Dr. Jones. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Pryor. Ms. White. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes of the November 8th, 2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? And a second? Any discussion or debate? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one item on the agenda today. It's to hear a presentation on the Board of Governors' Facility Inventory and Utilization Study. Vice Chancellor Knutman?
Thank you, Chair Codis. Good afternoon. Here to speak about a, a report that, that the Board of Governors receives each year on facility utilization for each campus within the UNC system. I'm going to present UNC Chapel Hill's data along with the way the system office data looks and follow really the model they put in front of the Board of Governors each year to, to show. So in how we're organized, first, we're going to talk through a little bit on the space profile, building condition and building age. And then we'll get into some utilization metrics and break that down by classroom and lab. Starting out kind of bigger picture, what does UNC Chapel Hill look like relative to the system? If you look at our data to the right, you can see the number of buildings, 357. The breakdown, academic affairs, health affairs, housing, and then RS is receipt-supported. You can also see, you know, in terms of total square footage, 20.1 million gross square feet. That's about 22% of the overall system. I do, I do want to note there too, not all square footage is the same. And this, you know, we're heavy research, the complexity associated with our space is very different than the rest of the system. In addition, when we think about our space and what it looks like here, we're looking at appropriated space. And if you look to the right, you can see categories of, of severe, poor, fair and good. This is all measured by looking at Facility Condition Index, which is really defined by that second bullet, where you take deferred maintenance and you divide by the replacement value of the building. And you can see that UNC Chapel Hill is over 50% in the either severe or poor condition. That is worse condition than the rest of the system, which we tend to be a little bit older. Rest of the system is about one-third in that same category. Another way you can look at condition of a building or condition of facilities is really age. Here, we're looking at, again, Chapel Hill on the right, system on the left. On the right, if you start from the bottom of the, the, that graph, you can see the construction age. And you can see that more than 60% of UNC Chapel Hill's buildings over 25 years old. We have done some investments there and tried to really work to reset that age. So you can see that next bar up, the UNC renovation age, it have made some progress to reset the clock some. You know, looking ahead and thinking about how we prioritize dollars and, and we've made some of these comments in the past. And I think you'll continue to see that be a theme, steering more money into the academic affairs. You can see when you really look at it compared to the health affair side, that academic affairs in worst condition campus. So again, that's big picture condition of, of, of our facilities. We're going to go a little closer and really focus in on classrooms and labs. First, a note just on how the system pulls this information together. They prepare this study once a year, looking across the whole system. They look at three different areas. The, the mention there, the utilization of instruction space, room space characteristics and building characteristics. So we just talked about the building characteristics. What they're talking about there is just condition. We just went through that. The room space characteristics, we don't have those included in this presentation and they typically don't present on that. But what we're talking about there is just how we're using space. 24% of assignable space across the system is in instruction, 12% is in research. It's looking at that data and tracking it over time. So that's what's presented there. The focus of this conversation is really that first bullet, the utilization of instruction space. And a, as we look to the, the, the bottom half of that slide, really what, what they're looking at there is, is we're going to, and we're going to look at this information together. One, weekly room utilization. So how often is the room used for scheduled classes? And then the second measure being seat fill, which is really, you know, the hours a seat is used in a room. So first, we're going to look at that, the weekly hours or the, the, that hours per week the classroom is used. And, and I, I want to spend a minute just talking through these charts because there, there are a little, there's a lot going on in them. So, so first, we're looking on the left-hand side, classrooms, on the right-hand side, labs. Second, what is the target? What, what is the metric that we're trying to, to gain? The system office has set that, that target. That's the line across both circles. So you can see that, that line being on the average weekly hours in classrooms being 35 hours. On the average weekly hours in class labs being 20 hours. So you see those, those lines again, that's the target the system office is using. In terms of, and then looking at the data for the system average are the two circles. And you can see kind of the outside circle being how, how the system performed in 2019. And then the inside circle being how the system performed in 2021. You might ask, why 2019 and why 2021? 2019 being a, a year before the pandemic as a baseline. And they wanted to have some point of comparison when they presented this information. 2021, it is a little bit dated. It just mirrors what the system had at this point in time. They typically give this presentation in the fall, so it is a little bit dated. We could update that information with, with 2022 data here. Looking at Carolina's performance, you can see that in the light, in the, the blue, the, the Carolina blue color there. And you see it on, on the classroom side, you can see our average 26.4 hours. So above the UNC system average of 21.8, you see that in 21, but short of, of the target. So that's on the classroom side. When we look at the labs, it's a little bit different story. You can see the 21 average being 8.2 hours for UNC Chapel Hill, below the system average of 13 and, and well short of the target of, of 20. So that's, that's on the weekly hours. If we shift gears to that other, other way to think about utilization, the system office typically presents, and that's use of workstations. Here, again, same format, classrooms on the left, labs on the right. Same 19 and 21 with the two circles and the comparison of the targets. You can see UNC Chapel Hill on the classroom side exceeds the target and exceeds the system average 68% compared to a target of 65. So, so doing pretty well there. On the lab side, at 44%, again, below the, the system average and below the target. So what does that mean? I think we were encouraged some on the, on the classroom utilization. Certainly note that it exceeds where the system's at. We still are short of, of the target, at least by, by some metrics. There has been some progress made in that space and we could talk more about that. The lab utilization does appear to fall short of the system average and the target. But I think what's important there is this is, we don't believe this is a complete picture yet. There, there are some things missing in that data and I think there's refinement needed. It, it really, I think our focus is really on getting that baseline of information correct. So that we can, when we have that information about utilization, we can match that up against what's evolving on the needs side with whether it's enrollment increasing, changes in demand for courses, course offerings, students. So those pieces, really the, the, the important work is going to be how those two intersect. All that said, while we're putting that together, we also recognize certainly technology layout of the space can impact how often it's used. So a, an update on, in, in that space. So we have been working to modernize classrooms. In 2018, there was a, an effort launched to really increase the amount of dollars we're putting into GPC, General Purpose Classroom. Furniture and maintenance, just technology, the furniture, carpet, just, just kind of basic updates. Again, a lot of what we've learned on, on the, the facility condition side for classrooms is not so much that needs fall into a traditional definition of deferred maintenance. But it's still maybe on the technology side, furniture side, some of these other components that, that need to be upgraded. Other, other work that's been completed that is important, that Carroll 111 renovation, the, the reason that's noted, it's a, it's a great example that a lot of the campus points to in terms of a, a large lecture hall that, that was renovated. The, the feedback has been incredibly positive on it and it's just a, got a high degree of flexibility in that space. And also some, some work at Morehead Chem, chemistry to, to really convert labs. Eight labs were modernized there. As we're looking ahead, we have, we, we, we continue to, to, to have some design and, and opportunities. The first, there's a, there's a Siderson Classroom renovation that we have at least queued up for consideration of, you can see the price tag there. Again, that's modeled after that Carroll 111 renovation. So, so a bigger, a large lecture hall renovation. The Stone Center basement design would be adding some capacity in the Stone Center. Again, converting for classrooms would be adding some, some classrooms from the, potentially from the College Arts and Sciences there to the general purpose classrooms. And then this instructional space study, again, that's getting at that point of matching up what we know on the utilization with the need on the campus and how that's evolving and changing. Also work being done to increase utilization. So again, we're trying to get the data right. We're doing some things on the facility side. And then on the management side, we, we, what we've really seen is some work here. The Provost has issued a memo on this topic in November. That you see the first phase really improving our data, getting some dashboards in place. Second phase being, you know, standard class start times and use of non-peak hours, which, which should result in some improvements in the way utilization is calculated. With that, happy to address any, any questions that I know, I know representatives from Provost Office are here as well to, to help address.
Thank you for that. So again, to kind of reinforce it, we're talking about system-wide 92 million square feet. Here, 20 million square feet. And if you think about the average mall being around 900,000 feet, you're 100 shopping malls, enclosed malls in terms of size. So that's a, a lot of footage. And one of the things that's not reflected in our legislative budget is rent on the 47 million feet that are appropriated, because that would be another, call it 1.5 billion in state funding if it was. There's new technology that monitors usage of space. So if you had the, the sensors in here, it would tell you that there's vacant seats or how much of the space was utilized. Have we deployed any of that yet?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, I think the idea of looking into that further sounds really appealing. I, I, I don't know if there's more you can share on that, but we.
Yeah, the, the cost on it has come way down and it can go into a space and it will tell you effectively the number of warm bodies in the space. So if you're looking at classroom utilization and there are five people in here, you may say, this is a classroom that's been utilized but not utilized very well. So it allows you to keep track of that and probably would cut down on some admin time for people having to record that. It also is effective for offices too, to show, you know, are people in there? Are they using certain areas? Are they using certain break areas? How is it utilized? So in the student stations percentage that's on here, what's the definition for this 56% standard? Or 68%?
This one. So that's the hours a seat is used in a room. So it's the total number of student clock hours in a room divided by the number of student stations in the room. So that's, that's how that number is derived.
So if we only put five student stations in here and add five students, we might call this 100% utilized.
Correct.
Okay. That's probably worth noting too, is looking at, you know, can you game the system? Because wouldn't necessarily be most effective. What other questions do we have for Vice Chancellor Knutman? Trustee Brown?
Are there any system schools who do a particularly good job in utilization that we can learn from?
That's a great question. Admittedly, I looked, I focused more on the system averages when looking at that data and didn't go in in more detail looking at individual school performances. I'd want to go back and look at that to see. That's a good question.
Part of the reason I ask is the targets look unrealistic if no one's hitting them.
I don't know if any individual school is, is exceeding those on any piece. I'd have to go back and.
Trustee Halsey Evans?
Can you diagnose for us how we got into a position with 50% of our space in severe or poor condition? And is there a strategic plan to get out from under that?
Yeah. It's, it's a topic that we, we talk about a lot on, on the campus. I mean, it's, 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 it's probably one of the bigger challenges for the university. We're older. Funding, it's, it's very competitive for the dollars and for appropriated space, we're very dependent on, on state allocations there. And they're competing needs across the state. And so it's, it's been, it's been very difficult to keep pace with, with the, the needs in those pieces. I will say, we, we've been talking a lot about trying to make sure that we're thinking about a strategy beyond just asking the state for dollars here. Is there a way to get predictable dollars and funds that we can allocate and earmark for this, this area? I think we've made some progress on that point. It's not going to change those numbers overnight. And, and one thing we can be is incredibly targeted and, and strategic about where we do put precious dollars into the most, the most needed repairs and, and whether that's, and we have to be, I, I think another component of this is also thinking about when space, when the, the, the renovation cost may exceed what the replacement is. We, we really need, we really need to confront some of those more difficult questions. And I think we're, we're, we're working toward that. I, I think we are making some progress on that.
Trustee Brown?
One follow-up to that is the, well, let me, let me, I forget what my follow-up question was, but my first question was actually how they came up with these targets? On the, I mean, because maybe, maybe to Brad's point, I, you know, if they, I mean, what was the?
I don't know. I don't know. I would, I, I can certainly circle back with the system office, do a little more homework on what, what the impetus was behind that and.
I mean, it's, it's obviously interesting because, and then maybe to follow up to Marty's point, when you, if people can game it or if, if, is it, is it even the right questions to be asking them?
It's, it's hard. I'm sure they were trying to find a balance between being aspirational and, and pushing, but also, also trying to be, at least be somewhat realistic. They may have set these a little bit on the, on the more aggressive side. This is difficult because in many ways, the data is incomplete, we feel like. So it's not even allowing us to, to, to. So it's not even allowing us to 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 really inform whether or not these are unrealistic or not.
I mean, maybe that's part of the feedback you guys can give to the system office to say, we we want cuz I think to Marty's point, we wanna actually have an analysis of, are we using our space well?
Correct.
And so if we think there's feedback we can give, whether it's these seem a little arbitrary, or um thinking, showing them that we we understand the purpose in their and the goals in their question, which is, you know, good utilization of what we've got, right? But but also showing maybe if 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 we need to improve that like how we look at that and making sure we're looking at the right things when we look at it. Um, I think my other question was just on the, when you talked about the funds for repair and renovation. If I I I know e- endowments are all, I I don't know what levers we have, or if there's been any conversation. I'm sure for the big schools, state and Carolina particularly, us primarily, maybe in some ways, there's uh, we we obviously have bigger you you know, endowments, and we could look at, I mean, it's significant to get these improvements done around campus. So I just, I don't, I don't know what to say, except that I think we should you know, be creative.
No, I appreciate that feedback, and I and I think y- you raised the same point, and I think we 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 need to, we you we need to be mindful of that and continue to prioritize it.
I don't think fundraising can solve this problem at this scale, but I spoke to this board almost a year ago that we intend to hire, only the first that I'm aware of, of a historic preservation fundraiser who is dedicated to look at some of these grand old buildings and ask the question. And maybe it's a hundred million dollars over a decade versus a billion dollars worth of but that will be a chance for people to invest in the historic nature of our campus and return some of these buildings back to their original purpose. So we're about to make that offer, by the time we meet next, we may actually have a person hired.
Thank you for the information. Um, kind of piggyback on the data question, um, it seems that there's an assumption being made that the utilization is only because of buildings. Um, and I guess being old and needing renovations, what have you. Um, is there, is that known, or is that an assumption? Meaning, we've heard a lot about faculty um salary ranges and faculty workload. Is it that there are not enough classes offered, especially just in connection with the enrollment? Kind of snafu that we heard about last year?
So the, you know, good good question. I I think on the on the condition and how it affects utilization, and we've heard anecdotal evidence that you whether the layout, the location, the kind of furniture, at times it just doesn't meet the way the the faculty member may wanna deliver that that course or the instruction. So it's really a match in finding that, and some of that is changing. So you've got a, y- y- even first is baseline on what our, what we have on the facility side, and then matching that up against an evolving um need on the campus. That component, I I think is is really, w- we need more information on that, I think, as it moves forward. Yeah.
We have, we have all types of strategies to encourage faculty to teach outside the peak hours that we haven't even started to do. So there's a lot that we've been able to sort of for students have to want to take classes, but the five P M, you know, slots.
Then I've got Trustee Ever, Chancellor Roberts, then um, uh, Trustee Jones.
Um, thanks so much. Are there smaller accessibility projects that can be done? I think a lot of what I get from students is concerns over accessibility. Um, and I know that, of course, there's a long list of ADA non-compliance, but what small projects can be tackled sooner rather than later? Cuz I think that's just a big brunt of my work that, I mean, I can't lift alone, so thank you all for your help, but just curious, what small things there are.
Sure, so accessibility continues to be a a big priority. We we, as you know, in the budget process this past year, we set aside five million dollars earmarked for that. A lot of that going to some big elevator um renovations, some making some some restrooms more accessible. Smaller pieces, e- al- also I should note, even just the Morehead uh labs, making some of those be more accessible to lab stations themselves. I think there's been some progress made. Um, I mentioned the carry forward dollars earlier, and having some more flexibility on funding to put into repair and renovation in these types of smaller projects. This is, this is the type of project that we we could address. We do have a list and a prioritized list of 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 some of these areas where we can continue to try to make progress on the accessibility needs.
Thank you. Uh, and Vice Chancellor Knopfman, thank you for your presentation today. Um, uh, one quick point and then a maybe a longer point. You know, just having someone go around with caulk and, you know, getting the the chip paint and repainting and getting rid of the wood rod, I think would go a long way, and that, you know, when you take it to scale, of course, the the dollars end up adding up. But I think even just simple repairs like that would go a long way towards improving the overall look of the campus, even if it doesn't um impact the classrooms themselves. Um, but to your, to your point before, the classroom utilization and the the layout of the classrooms and whatnot really goes to class availability and some of the issues we've seen with enrollment and students not being able to get the classes that they either want for their major or that they need to graduate. And that really, um, I think would, to to look at that type of issue, it it's gonna be it would require us to take this type of data, combine it with what Dr. Corby is working on with um the faculty workload, and also speak to the registrar. And so we'd, I think we'd have to have a a group of people that are kind of coming at that from a number of different angles to really sort of put the pieces together to figure out a plan forward. So and that was one of the reasons why I think um a number of people are here. Um, Lauren, is Lauren here? Lauren, yes, nice, nice to see you, and Darren, yes, and so, yes.
And thanks for that comment. I I I think that's, I I think that, um, I don't, I don't know if you all wanna speak to it anymore, or I I agree. The the intersection of those data sets will be informative in understanding that. And I know we've made some progress even in, I think, have some information on demand for courses. Um, had that data that didn't previously exist. So I think we're making progress in this space, and again, matching that with with some of this facility side.
Hi, everyone, I'm Lauren, I'm the registrar. Um, I I think we have a lot of different issues coming into one. And so it all contributes to the lack of the classroom utilization percentage, which we all wanna see higher. I think we have some behaviors where we have faculty that are teaching off of our standard pattern or teaching two days a week instead of three days a week, which then contributes to a decrease in the amount we're using the classrooms. I think we have faculty that may be teaching non-standard, and when I say that, we teach fifty minutes Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seventy-five minutes Tuesday, Thursday. When you put a seventy-five minute class on Monday, Wednesday, you're eating up multiple time periods for students, which then complicates how they schedule their courses. And I think we often forget, students don't care who controls the space, they just wanna be able to take their courses. And so we're not necessarily working collaboratively to solve the problem. We are now, I mean, I think we've formed a few committees, we have faculty looking at all the data that actually shares with us who's doing what, so that we might be able to rein in some of the behavior. I think for a long time, we've had departments that rightfully so, have been acting independently, and they're not really understanding their impact on the greater whole and how that trickles down into classroom utilization.
I appreciate everyone's comments, and I'm 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 gratified to see the interest in this topic, because I think it's very important. I suggested that that this be on the agenda. We saw the presentation at a system level presented to the Board of Governors in the fall. As Vice Chancellor Knopfman mentioned, um, it had campus-specific data in the system-wide presentation that this board had not seen. And that's what's in this this presentation. It's really the starting point for discussion. As you say, it it implicates a whole host of issues, but if you abstract up to the most macro level, we've got operating expenses and 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 capital expenses. And our operating expenses, very roughly, are people, their salaries and benefits. Our capital expenses, very roughly, are space, their buildings, new buildings and repair and renovation of buildings. And so how we use our space, how this not only informs what space needs to be renovated and where accessibility or technology improvements need to be made, but also what new space we need in the future. So as um, uh, as one anecdote, I was speaking with somebody who used to work here, and he asked me how the the new business school building was coming along. And I said, well, I've seen the plans up toward the site, it's beautiful. And he said, are they holding class on Fridays at the business school yet? And I I I I laughed, and he said, well, there was a twenty-five percent capacity utilization gap capacity increase available there just from scheduling. Before we start thinking about the new building that whose purpose is to enable the business school to increase enrollment. Now, it's going to be a much more functional building than what they have now. It's going to be, you walk into a modern classroom building, it doesn't look anything like a lot of our older buildings in terms of design and accessibility and technology and everything else. But this isn't some minor um miscellaneous issue. This goes to the core of how we use our our resources. So again, it's a starting point for discussion, but I'm I'm glad folks are interested in it, because I uh, Vice Chancellor Knopfman and I and his team plan to spend considerable time working on this, and and will continue to keep you updated. Any other questions or comments? I think um Chancellor Roberts really summarized that nicely. And I, one of the things that I I think will cut through a lot of this is if we start putting dollar amounts on them and tying that capital back to operational and applying rent or applying a variable rate uh almost tuition for utilization to incentivize people to use it. UNCG did an interesting study where they took their business school and charged various uh rents based on corner offices versus another one. And very quickly, people adjusted their preferences as to where they'd wanna go if there was a dollar amount tied to it. So I think we've got to find some way, what we've learned with uh budget finance here is unless there's a dollar amount tied to it, people don't pay attention to it. So I really appreciate uh Chancellor Roberts' comments there, and just demonstrates uh why we've got a a great get here to to help us solve these along with uh Vice Chancellor Knopfman. Uh, anything else to come before the committee today? Uh, hearing nothing else, without objection, we will stand adjourned.